Recording in progress.
Have you read the poll to order the November seventh, two thousand twenty three Southborough Select Board? Um, four public comments. Wanted to briefly, um, take a moment to come to the app of the Select Board, recognize the recent passing of Wootie Beals going to over six and and to his present. Our condolences to his family on his asset. Um, I think of Mr. Beals as somewhat, um, is really synonymous with some of the best things about Southborough, both, um, his involvement with the Southborough Open Land Foundation, Chestnut Hill Farm, the Beals Preserve, and our, um, assets like that. But also, I remember him in the brief time I got to know him as a very kind and warm person. So I think, um, it's appropriate that we, uh, recognize him and express our condolences. Is there anyone else who would like to share any quick memories of Mr. Beals?
Yes, I would, thank you. I have, I would not say that I know Whit well, but I've certainly interacted with him actively over a number of years. And I got to know him a lot better during the time that I'd been the town's representative to Massachusetts Water Resources Authority Advisory Board. And Whit has been for a long time a champion of watershed protection and has worked tirelessly to, um, help acquire wa- watershed lands around the reservoirs, the Wachusett, Quabon Reservoir. They've been a critical factor in terms of, uh, filtering the water that goes into those reservoirs and allowing the, the water supply for the greater Boston area to start as much more pure water than in many places where they're drilling it and pulling it out of the ground. That's been a huge plus in terms of cost saving as well as quality improvement for water. And Whit has led that charge tirelessly over decades. And I think that's a, a very under, under unknown, less known and unappreciated aspect of what he's done for the larger community. In addition to his tireless work on behalf of the town and the Beals Preserve and other, uh, very important contributions to Southborough. So a great loss for the community and for the state as well, as a matter of fact. So very sad to see here that news. Thank you.
Anyone else like to say anything? Marguerite? No?
I didn't know him well, but I knew him from many town meetings, and he always was supportive of keeping Southborough, um, wild.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is public comment, and this is an opportunity for, uh, members of the public to speak to an item that's not on the agenda. And, um, under our policy, we ask that people keep public comment to, uh, uh, three minutes or under. Yep. So if you could first just please introduce yourselves and, you know, your, uh, your name and address.
We are John and Susan Pomford of Seven Cottage Street. Why are we here? Because you wouldn't put us on the agenda which we had requested. What is the problem? My husband, John, met with DB, DPW and contractors four months ago. Before paving Cottage Street, DPW had promised to keep the asphalt three inches below the level of our driveway. DPW made promises and they broke them. When Cottage Street was recently reconstructed, they didn't do as they promised. DPW's contractor incorrectly paved to the top of our cobblestones, permitting drainage water to overflow in from the road. As a result, water now flows into the driveway and ultimately into our cellar. What did we do to fix water drainage problems prior to paving? We rebuilt our driveway at major expense about ten years ago. The pavement in front of our driveway was three inches lower, so water drainage flowed past instead of over the cobblestones and into the driveway. This prevented problems we had with water getting into our cellar, creating mold and health issues. We purchased and installed an industrial-sized dehumidifier, an eye wave air purification system, gutters, and underground dispersment of water, drainage water. Over a period of time, we spent about twenty thousand dollars to mitigate drainage water problems. What is the solution? The back and forth with the DPW has been going on for months. All we are asking is to restore the pavement to the original level in front of our driveway and extend that trough about six feet in the westerly direction. Kindly instruct your new DPW superintendent to restore what we had. Pavement three inches lower to keep water out of our driveway. This is all about fixing asphalt, all on town property. We spent a lot of money to keep water from flowing into the driveway. You broke it, you fix it, please. We have a quick video showing the water flowing into the driveway.
On October twenty first, during a moderate rainfall, the video shows street drainage pouring over our driveway, creating a river undermining the bricks. The longer it rains or the heavier it rains, there is a larger volume of drainage water going into the driveway. That creates an artificial reservoir on our property. That eventually gets into our cellar. The sandbags, DPW drainage solution, obviously didn't help much. Please do as my wife asks. Please dig up and restore the asphalt to re- to recreate the three-inch lower level in front of our driveway so the water flows by the driveway. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Um, is there anyone else wishing to speak under public comment? Either, up to you.
Cynthia Foster, three Aspenwood Lane, but I'm here as retiree because I was here the night that, um, lots of people, um, spoke out about the Aetna change, and I just want you to know what's happened to me. Yesterday, I had my annual wellness visit. I went to schedule next year's appointment. We got it scheduled, and I said, okay, so my insurance next year will be Aetna. And the person said, oh, Cindy, we don't take Aetna. And I said, no, no, you don't take the Aetna HMO. This is a PPO, extended service, and anyone who takes Medicare will take this insurance. So she called the business manager. The business manager said, yeah, no, Aetna, no, no, no. And they had a very short list. They showed me the list of insurances they don't take. It was very short. So I went home, I called the hotline, the, the transition team hotline. To their credit, they knew who I was, what Southborough was. That was good. I gave them all the information about who to speak to at the doctor's office. Person said, I'll get back to you. Still waiting. Um, clearly, there's not going to be a solution for me through Aetna. So I'm not sure what you all expect me to do. Um, I did get in touch with my current provider in hysterics, um, asking, were there any available affordable plans to me? And they do, um, have something that I would probably end up having to do. Um, but I need you guys to know that what they promised to is not true. It just isn't true, and I don't know what to do.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a couple of questions?
Uh, yep.
So, um, when did you contact Aetna?
Yesterday.
Okay, so yesterday.
Yeah.
She didn't contact Aetna, she called the transition team, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so you contacted the transition team yesterday?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, and they have not gotten back, well, you spoke to them?
Oh, the woman that I spoke with said that she would get right back to me.
Okay, so...
Gave her my cellphone number, I haven't heard a word.
Okay, so well, it's been...
More than twenty-four hours.
More than twenty-four hours?
Yeah.
Um, Mr. Purple, uh, the Aetna representatives stood right there and told us that this was not going to be a problem, and told me very specifically, because I...
You did.
Asked. And so, while I might like to give them a day or two more to see if they can resolve this issue, um, I would expect that if, um, if it's not resolved, because then I think we need to have a serious discussion with Aetna about the representations they made to this board, um, because this is a very serious matter. So can I ask you to follow up?
Absolutely, well, I'm following up as we speak, but it's the first thing I'll do tomorrow morning.
So someone will get back to you, Cindy, um, to find out what's going on here. I'm going to be very surprised if the business manager is not wrong. Um, what, what was the hardest part probably to, well, we're not supposed to be doing what we're doing, but it's okay for the moment, um, because it's not on the agenda. But the hardest thing for me, um, to, um, I think relate to, to the retired group is that the concept of in-network, out-of-network doesn't apply to the individual retiree, but it does still apply to the doctors. If they are not part of the Aetna network, they do have to submit a different set of forms to be reimbursed, as long as they are a Medicare doctor. So before we jump to conclusions, let's just get the facts and find out and get back to her and see if we can't get this resolved.
And I, I think, um, so there'll, there'll be some follow-up from, uh, Mr. Purple and...
Okay, and how and when is that going to happen? Because it's November, and time is fleeting here. Um, in the meantime, um, I did call my current provider. Um, I read all the stuff about if by law they have to offer us an opt-out. Um, my concern is when we had the Zoom information meeting and the people from Fall River said, oh, no, there were no problems, no problems at all. And I was like, hmm, yeah, sure, and because I'm so positive. What, how are the selectmen, or sorry, the Select Board, going to know how many people opt-out because they're running into this lose-your-primary or...
Well, I'd, I'd expect we'd hear from it from, you know, circumstances just like you're describing, but, um, I want to, um, keep the agenda moving along.
Let's just find out what's happened here and get back to her and then go from there.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I'll hear from Mark, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Okay, uh, Mr. Hegarty?
Hello, Jim Hegarty, fourteen Maple Crest Drive. Uh, I come as a private citizen here. Uh, it's interesting, I'm, I'm coming to ask your board to consider adding an agenda item for future, uh, item. For you to consider whether it would be appropriate to have a new bylaw that would require a higher quantum of votes for approval of CPC funding at town meeting than a simple majority, when it's to fund a project that the town doesn't actually own. And there are three projects that I'm aware of that are in the queue to ask for several hundreds of thousands of dollars for CPC funds, that are for town properties that we don't own. And I think it's a worthy discussion, that it's, uh, it's an unusual activity, and there are plenty of, uh, votes that we take at town meeting that require two-thirds. There are some eighty percent, some even ninety percent for various reasons. And I think that this is a worthy discussion, that, um, there should be a higher bar to meet, to authorize the spending of town money for something we don't own. The voters, it's their money, the voter should have that right, but I think it's a discussion you might want to consider having yourselves, okay? Because it's, I'd rather have a discussion in a form like this versus somebody bring a citizen's petition and then, you know, it gets, it just comes for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Claire? And then I'm hoping that after this, we can now move on to the rest of the...
Good evening. Regular agenda items. I'm Claire Reynolds, one oh four Main Street. I'm not exactly sure of the protocol here. I'm here to speak to an item that's on the agenda. Can I do that?
Yes, please wait once, once we get to that item on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
All right.
Okay, so, um, the next item on the agenda is, uh, the poll hearing. And is someone from National Grid here?
Yes.
Okay, great.
On the Zoom.
Could you?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Uh, the Southborough Select Board should hold a public hearing Tuesday, November seventh, two thousand twenty-three, six thirty-five PM. McCall of Hearing Room at the Southborough Townhouse, seventeen Common Street, Southborough, Mass, to consider a petition by Mass Electric Company, National Grid, and Verizon New England Incorporated to install one joint-owned pole to lay and maintain laterals, cables, and wires to install a push brace and to remove tree guys at eighty-one Oak Hill Road. Meeting may also be listened to or viewed by the public through a link located at, uh, ma-southborough.civicplus.com backslash six seven four backslash virtual meetings. Southborough Select Board.
All right. Okay, um, we, we have our rep, Rebecca Castillo?
Yes.
Okay. Could you please introduce yourself and, um, is there a quick presentation you'd like to make?
Hi, uh, my name's Rebecca. I work for National Grid. Um, pretty much just currently, there's, uh, two tree guys, um, that go into the trees at eighty-one, in between eighty-one and seventy-nine Oak Hill Drive. Um, we, we try at all costs to get rid of now because they just killed the trees. So we just want to take those two tree guys out, install a push brace to support, um, pole thirty-one that's currently still there. And that's pretty much it.
All right. Um, does anyone take the word of any questions about this?
Nope, look straight forward to me.
Are, are, is there any public comment?
What is the tree guy? Wayne Black, ninety-four Oak Hill Road.
It's just a guy wire. Uh, it's a metal, uh, wire that goes from the, the pole itself to into the, back in the day, they used to, uh, secure them any way that they could, so they used to put a big anchor, um, from a pole to anything. So they used to use trees. So it's a metal wire and it, it, it helps guide the tree, I mean, the, uh, the pole. So if you, if you look at it, the, the pole right now, currently, there's two metal wires, uh, that are anchored into a, a tree. Um, and what happens, it ends up killing the tree over the years. So any chance that we can now, we try to take those guy wires out and support it differently. A push brace is one of them. Another one is a, a down guy that goes into the ground, um, just the angle of pole thirty-one, how it, it, it taps off downhill, hilltop drive. Um, we need that push brace to kind of help support it that way. Um, so that's why they put that push brace instead of, you know, a guy wire, uh, different things.
Right, the same situation was on pole thirty-two, which is in the diagram. There was a...
Yep.
Wire that went from that pole through two oak trees, down to the next pole at the next house, down from me, heading south. And we ended up having them cut that wire because the tree was dead. It was halfway through the tree, and that tree still stands, dead, ready to fall on my property, my wife, my son, myself, but nobody's done anything about taking that tree down completely. Number one. Number two, between pole thirty-two and thirty-one, there's a tree that was taken down because it came down in a storm. Nobody came back to take care of the stump that was on that hill that goes from the rock wall of my property to Oak Hill Road. So we've got people climbing, or deer, or whatever, that hill knocking rocks down off the rock wall towards Oak Hill Road to that hill.
So there's a, so there's a stump grounding issue, and then there's also a tree...
A dead tree that's...
What's, what's your address again, sir?
Ninety-four.
Ninety-four Oak Hill Road. Yep, it's right next to pole thirty-two. Down a little bit, yeah.
All right, thanks.
About thirty feet. And then there's a bunch of trees, weed trees, as I call them, because all they do is support the poison ivy that likes to grow up to the telephone pole, telephone line, and then run across it all. And when you get wintertime and you get snow, ice, and everything else, that's why we have so many wire issues, power issues, and trees coming down, because they don't really do anything because of that hill from the rock wall down to Oak Hill Road. It's probably a six-to-eight-foot drop from my property down to Oak Hill Road at ninety-four Oak Hill Road.
Okay.
The diagram shows the existing pole thirty-one, that's staying where it is, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So you're going to have to maneuver and move some maple trees from hilltop drive because where you're proposing to put the push brace is four maple trees between the corner of Oak Hill Road and my side entry, which goes to the side door of my house. So you're going to need to maneuver and get rid of those maple trees that are dying anyway and make space for your push pole.
Yeah, so, uh, I'm not a hundred percent, like, this wasn't my, my job, um, but usually when they put it in, it usually goes about six feet off the pole. Um, so if there is tree trimming that needs to be done, um, Dana Larson is the person who designed this. He, I work in the office with him. I can definitely make sure that he puts in tree trimming and also to trim along, uh...
Oh. She muted.
Now, it is town property, so we can only trim, you know, I think it's six feet on the side of our power lines. Um, so just keep that in mind, but I can definitely have a tree crew go down and, and trim up these poles, and, and I'll have them look at that, uh, the stump that is there in front of ninety-four, um, Oak Hill Road.
Okay, my initial question to this whole thing was, why do the poles come up from Ashland into Southborough on the other side of the street, eighty-three, eighty-one side, and then maneuver over to my side of the street to pole thirty-one and thirty-two? Why don't they just come up to eighty-one and seventy-nine, and then you wouldn't have to worry about the tree guys? They would have their own lines going to where they needed to get them and go from there. Because right now, the lines are coming by these two big oak trees. They're leaning on the, on the wires. The oak trees have never been trimmed. There's dead branches up there, three feet wide, that are ready to fall, and somebody needs to address those trees as well.
Okay, we can look into the tree removal issue, but is there any other concern?
Just giving you the full scope of what's out there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for your eyes on the ground.
Um, any other public comment about the eighty-one Oak Hill Road poll hearing? I'm seeing none. Um, I move that we close the public hearing.
Can we discuss this before, um, we close it? He's brought up, what was your name? I've got ninety-four.
Wayne Black.
Wayne Black.
Okay.
Do we want to continue this and have Bill kind of meet with him to make sure we're taking care of this correctly?
I'm running to him about this right now, but I, I don't...
Yeah, I don't think so.
Yeah, I don't think this delays...
We need to coordinate with DPW on this. It sounds like there's...
Two different, two different issues, two different related issues.
Okay, we have a tree policy, and I just want to make sure that, you know, we're talking about trimming trees now. I just want to make sure that we really have thought through what we're doing here before, um, we authorize something that we really didn't mean to authorize. So if you're comfortable that the trimming that she referred to is something they can do without a, another hearing? I'm not, I don't know.
I just want, I just wanted to add, I, I just looked this up real fast in our, in our system, because I'm not familiar with the area, and the pole lines, um, do cross over in front of his house, uh, uh, from pole thirty-two, but they continue all the way down Oak Hill Drive, I mean, all the way down to the end. So the poles have to stay on that side of the road. Um, as for the tree trimming, I mean, there is oak trees on both sides of the road. It's all the way down, it's not just on one side, so, uh, there's, you know, tree trimming needs to be done. I mean, we can address, we can do as much trim, tree trimming as we can legally, uh, between our power lines, but I mean, we can't go cutting all kinds of trees down that's not ours and that's on town property. So that would be the DPW. I mean, I could have somebody from our office meet, you know, anybody. I just don't have a definite answer for that.
So I'm okay if we want to go forward. It's this, he said there's four maple trees that have to come down as part of the work they want to do, so that's why I'm confused. If we can separate the other work that he, that Mr. Beck thinks needs to be looked at from what Grid needs to get done here, fine, but he said there's four trees that are going to have to come down in order for them to get done what they're trying to get done with this, and that's why I'm confused.
Yeah, I don't...
Four maple trees going from that, this pole, along hilltop drive, so depending on the outward of an angle, they're pushing...
There's the pole, there's one that's going to come down here.
They might not...
You, you, no one can, can, can hear you?
There's all the lines on the...
Yeah, yeah. Is this something that you could, you could work with National Grid on?
So from the pole itself, downhilltop drive...
Yep.
At the edge of the property, there's four maples. I'm not saying all four have to come down, I'm just saying there's going to be one or two, because they're small, dying, and in that area that the push pole's going to be. So there's probably going to be two that are going to have to come down. Then secondarily, that I didn't get to, when the town plows come and do their bang-up job during the wintertime, they come down Oak Hill Road, they plow everything off of hilltop to the edge, and then go back on Oak Hill and plow it to the telephone pole that is going to be used as a push pole. So they might not want to do that because of the limited sightlines that we have already trying to get out of hilltop drive, to keep all the traffic flying up Oak Hill Road during the wintertime. So that's another, it just all keeps snowballing.
Andrew, it, I think clearly DPW coordination is important here, but it, I'm looking at it on Google Maps, it looks to me like there's plenty of room for a push pole in front of the maple trees there, so they may have to do something about the maple trees, but again, DPW, I think is pretty capable of sorting this stuff out.
Okay. So we had a motion to close the public hearing, which was made and...
Seconded, yeah.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Um, I move that, um, we approve the relief that sought in, uh, National Grid's, um, legal notice of the poll hearing for eighty-one Oak Hill Road.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay.
Four to one.
Uh, the next item on the agenda is our annual tax classification hearing, and...
Mark, do you think we, we, we can, we can, we can, uh, take that?
So...
The, uh, the Southborough Select Board should hold a public hearing with the Board of Assessors Tuesday, November seventh, six forty-five PM, to determine the certified valuation of each class of property, the minimum residential factor, and the allocation of the tax burden among the four classes of real property, residential, open space, commercial and industrial, and personal property. The public hearing will be held in McCall of Hearing Room at the Townhouse, seventeen Common Street, Southborough. Meeting may also be viewed by the public through a link located at mass-southborough.civicplus.com backslash six seven four backslash virtual meetings. All interested parties are encouraged to view and or participate. Additionally, interested citizens may present written views prior to the public hearing.
All right, Mr. Spelly?
Just waiting here for this...
Okay.
Good to go? All right, good evening, honorable board members. Uh, welcome to our annual public classification hearing. Uh, joining me, uh, there they are, we got Jeff and Heath from our Board of Assessors. Tanny couldn't join us tonight, um, and of course, the centerpiece of our department, Lori Esposito, who we'd like to thank for putting this together, um, as always. So we're going to jump right into it, we're going to go through this rather quickly. A lot of this is pretty much the same as it's been the, uh, in the past. Uh, what is task, uh, tax classification? Allows communities to have different tax rates for certain classes of property. State statute provides a maximum allowable portion of the tax levy, up to a hundred and fifty percent, to be borne by the CIP classes. Again, that's commercial, industrial, and personal property combined. It provides a minimum allowable portion to be borne by the residential class. It provides a minimum allowable portion to be borne by the residential class. Key concepts of tax classification. Classification does not raise additional dollars from the property tax, but serves to distribute how much levy will be raised from each class. Allows the select board, and only the select board, to make the decision whether to shift tax burden from one class of property to another. Town of Southborough has never had a split tax rate, issue of fairness between property classes. Let's jump into the fiscal year assessments. The FY twenty-four assessments are completed and approved by the Department of Revenue. FY twenty-four assessments are based on the analysis of calendar year twenty-twenty-two sales and market conditions. FY twenty-four assessments reflect the value of properties as of January one, twenty-twenty-three. This is the same for all communities. Uh, calendar year twenty-twenty-three sales and market conditions will be reflected in the FY twenty-twenty-five assessments, as there is a one-year time lag in the assessment process. So let's take a look at what's happening with the assessments. Town total, uh, taxable value increased by two hundred, excuse me, three hundred and twenty-six million to a new high of three point five six seven billion in FY twenty-four. It's an increase of a, of ten point zero five percent. Again, this is overall value. Now, when we break it down by class, the overall assessments are on the rise, as we all know. Residential class increased eleven point one nine percent. If you remember, last year it went up fifteen point eight eight percent. Again, I've been probably, I've been assessing for twenty-four years, appraising for thirty years. I don't ever remember back-to-back years where just values have increased, um, so dramatically. Uh, community, commercial class increased two point eight three, industrial class increased three point three three, and the personal property class increased eleven point six nine percent. Just a quick comment on that, last year it dipped one point zero two percent. Uh, we lost a, I think it was a four million dollar account, um, so it's good to see that it did bounce back. Let's talk about new growth. Fiscal year twenty-twenty-four new growth, overall value, forty-eight point eight two million realized. Tax dollars, it equates to seven hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars, and the percent change in dollars is about seven point three three percent. So this year's new growth increased, uh, is approximately forty-nine thousand dollars over the prior year, which we're now close to our ten-year average of seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Average single-family assessed value, everybody wants to see the average of single-family assessed value. So the average single family went up eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred to eight hundred, ninety-three thousand, four hundred, an eleven point one nine percent increase. Again, I think you can see the bar graph. Obviously, the last two years have just been insane, uh, on the single-family or residential side. Let's take a look at the average commercial, industrial, and mixed-use. So again, the value increased about eighty-six thousand, six hundred to three million, three fifty-nine, five hundred, a two point six percent increase. So clearly, the residential is significantly outpacing the commercial and industrial. It is good to see that the commercial, industrial is increasing a little bit. Okay, single rate, where are we? Single rate impact. So if we continue with a single tax rate, the estimated rate would decrease from fourteen seventy-six to thirteen ninety-one. Again, remember, anytime you have significant increase in value, which puts downward pressure on the tax rate, again, it's the town's total value divided into the levy. The average single-family tax bill would rise from eleven thousand, eight hundred and sixty dollars in twenty-three to twelve thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars in twenty-four, a five hundred and sixty-seven dollar, or four point seven eight percent increase. Similar to FY twenty-three, this year's tax increase is due to the residential market rising steeply, again, far outpacing the commercial, industrial side. Single rate impact, the average commercial, industrial, mixed-use, uh, tax would decrease from four, forty-eight, three oh eight to forty-six, seven thirty-one, a three point two seven percent increase. So again, the, um, what's happening here is the values are not keeping up. The values aren't increasing as much as the tax rate decreased. So as a result, um, you gotta, you gotta dip on the, uh, commercial, industrial, and mixed-use properties. Relationship of classes, fiscal year twenty-four, commercial, industrial, personal property classes, or CIP, combined represents sixteen point three two percent of the town's total value. Uh, this is down from the previous year of seventeen point one eight. Historically, our CIP typically falls between seventeen and twenty percent, uh, so obviously, we're dipping below that. Also, keep in mind, the majority of the real estate new growth is on the residential side. Also, just wanted to mention, you have a few forty-B projects coming down the pike. Those are not taxed as commercial, industrial, those are taxed as residential. Uh, so if you get significant value on them, again, it's gonna help, uh, you know, push the CIP percentage downward. Okay, so what we have here is a split rate, single rate analysis, mix it up a little bit, and just kind of the gyration of the items you wanna look at when considering something like this, okay? And that's in the blue boxes. And the first one is the commercial, industrial makeup. So we have no large box stores, as you all know, few national chain stores, primarily small businesses, significant office space, mostly tenant-based. The problem with that, as you all know, everybody's working from home, which has caused, uh, high vacancy rates as, uh, demand has diminished. Whether that turns around, we don't know, but that's, that is a big deal for, a big worry for us here in Southborough. Uh, the next is, you always wanna look at the percent of commercial, industrial. Again, we already talked about it, sixteen point three two percent of the town's value. So when that number, um, shrinks, obviously, the shift, you need a larger and larger shift to make any considerable savings to the residential tax bill. Okay, every tax dollar shifted on residential costs CNI five dollars. And again, that, that relates back to the pie chart that we did, um, it's not something we target. Of the thirty-eight hundred taxable parcels, only a hundred and ninety-five of them, or five point one percent of them, are CIP mixed-use properties, yet it accounts for sixteen point thirty-two, uh, percent of the town revenue. Uh, the other thing, another, another item you wanna consider, many companies pay personal property tax. We've talked this, talked about this in the past. Three hundred and thirty, uh, taxable accounts right now, um, we have much, many more companies, but some of them are not taxed at the local level for their personal property. It generates about one point five million dollars in revenue. Most of this comes from the commercial, industrial, um, segment, um, and obviously helps offset some of the taxes for the residents. Next, you wanna look at the economic impact. Single rate is a positive tool in helping attract new businesses to town. We've talked about this, uh, many times in the past. It is not the only, I see Sam smiling on that one. Again, it's just, um, one checkbox for us and the positive in trying to attack, attract, um, businesses. Very important, considering we have a giant negative, which is, uh, no, uh, public sewer. Uh, from a dollar and cents perspect, perspective, obviously, CNI is the biggest moneymaker for the town, has its minimal impact on costly services. So it's important that we try to, you know, we wanna see some new growth come in the commercial, industrial side, not just the residential. And obviously, the AMC land, uh, being sold off, there's a big opportunity there. How, what happens with that remains to be seen. Uh, and, you know, single rate allows us to stay competitive with the surrounding communities. Sense of community, you always wanna take a look at that. I think a lot of times, this is understated. I think it's very important for a small community like Southborough. Business contributes funds and resources for our athletic recreation scholarship and community events. Small businesses also provide contributions to the various department, friends' accounts, um, rec, and, uh, library. Split rate drives wedge between residential and businesses. Wanted to bring this up, this was a quote from a resident who spoke in favor of a single tax rate in the classification hearing about fifteen years ago. Until, to me, it still resonates, uh, it definitely resonates with me. She went on to talk about the sense of community and, you know, why would we wanna drive a wedge, um, again, between the, the businesses? We don't have a lot of them, uh, the businesses and the residents, we don't have a lot of them, and we should cherish what we have, there's no doubt. And of course, fairness, residents decide town spending, the level of services at town meeting. Okay, and that's the crux of our levy. Businesses and entities obviously do not get a vote. Residents utilize, utilize a vast majority of the town services, we talked about that. Residents elect the town officials, who the decision-making is a split or single tax rate. It's kinda strange, they get no, um, say in the matter, and yet you can split the tax rate and make them pay a higher burden. This is a visual that I pulled off the D O R website, have to admit, it's still two years old, couldn't find one that's updated. Gotta work on that with the data bank from the state. But again, I think it gives you a pretty good visual of where your split rates are. They're along the one, excuse me, the, yeah, the one twenty-eight belt, the vast majority of them Springfield, southeastern Mass. Um, again, the beige ones are, as you can see, are all single-rate communities. The thing that you really need to take, you know, when we talk about a split rate, sixty-nine point two three percent are a single rate. See what it in terms you guys can understand? If you get elected and garner sixty-nine percent of the vote, it's a landslide. So this isn't something that's, and it's mostly small communities that are gonna run a single rate. Okay, tax rate using the average value, we're not gonna spend much time on this. It's a little misleading, and what I don't like about this is the average kinda skews the, the story here because of the CNI improved. You see it at three million, three fifty-nine, five hundred, okay? Obviously, it's gonna be skewed by probably a handful of very large buildings. So let's move on to the next slide. We're gonna look at the median, I think it makes a little more sense, it's, hits home, tells the story a little bit better, okay? So if we look at another, if we look at the five percent, uh, shift scenario using median value, the median value produces a, only a hundred and fourteen dollar savings to a residential property, while CIP property, uh, goes up seven hundred and eighteen dollars. In round numbers, for every one dollar you save, again, as we mentioned earlier, the residential class, it costs a CIP five dollars. Okay? Everybody likes to see tax rates. Do not assume because you have a lower or higher tax rate, your tax is a higher or lower. Obviously, the level of value for, for instance, residential, um, can obviously skew those, but everybody kinda likes to see what we're doing there. Uh, just to run through a couple of them that have a split, Berlin, they have a split rate because of the mall. You'll see that a lot of times in some of the smaller communities, they literally target one, um, uh, one taxpayer. And I believe resident, Berlin also runs a, uh, commercial discount for the smaller business. The ones in there that you would expect, Framingham, Marlboro, again, a lot of big box stores, chains. And I just, just one real quick note, Hopkinton does not have a split rate. It's, it's a, uh, they adopted a means-tested senior exemption, um, which slightly skews the residential. It's a shift within the residential, uh, class. So considering all these, the board will continue, again, unanimously recommends with a single rate, the fiscal year twenty-four. Uh, none of this has really changed. Let's move on to, we've got two other tax shift options. So remember, we're not just voting on split rate versus single rate, there's also, um, two others. Unlike the split rate option, it shifts burden from one class to another. So that's residential versus commercial, industrial, and personal property. Small commercial, uh, exemption shifts burden within the property class. As with the split rate, no additional taxes are raised by either of these exemptions. Although Southborough is not likely candidate to adopt either of these two exemptions, they must be presented in a formal most vote, must be taken by the, uh, select board to compute our, to complete our classification hearing. Not gonna spend much time on either of these. The residential exemption shifts tax burden within the residential class from lower assessed properties, uh, to seasonal rental and higher assessed properties. Typically, this exemption is adopted in the areas, areas with a low rate of owner occupancy. Examples would be communities with lots of rental property, like your Boston and Cambridge, or lots of seasonal properties, such as Barnstable and, uh, Nantucket. A whopping eighteen towns out of three hundred and fifty-one, uh, have adopted a residential exemption. Again, not very, it, it's not really applicable to Southborough here. I run through a scenario here, um, that shows a shift. Uh, so, the scenario is ninety-five percent of the resident, residents qualify for a ten percent exemption. It's kind of a worksheet, um, we put this together. And really, the breakpoint is, uh, one million, seventy thousand, nine forty, and again, shifts taxes off the high and puts them on the lower-end residence, um, shift within the class. Has nothing to do with commercial, industrial. Small, uh, commercial exemption, this exemption creates a tax burden shift that reduces the taxes paid by owners of properties occupied by small businesses and shifts them to large commercial and industrial taxpayers. So again, I believe this is what Berlin did, uh, adopt. This is typically found in communities with a large commercial, industrial tax base. Uh, only fourteen of three hundred and fifty-one communities have adopted a small commercial exemption. So again, doesn't really, it's not really applicable to the town of Southborough. So the board, uh, unanimously, uh, you know, recommends, uh, not to adopt either of these two. So lastly, it's, uh, the further action items. Mr. Chairman, the select board discussion, we go to public comment. Again, it's public comment, not discussion, select board vote, and you're gonna take three votes, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, it was a very good presentation. It's basically in substance the same presentation as, uh, as, as last year, um, and I know...
Be the same as the next ten years, probably.
And, and the fifteen years before that, so...
I guess I'll just first start with, um, Alan Marguerite, if you have any questions or...
Thank you, it's an excellent presentation, uh, it's my first time through this in a while. I am not in favor of a split rate. Everybody wants somebody else to pay for the things you, we want. And, uh, if we're unwilling to pay for them, then we need to go to town meeting and find budgets that we want to reduce. That's the path to reducing your taxes.
I'm not in favor of a split rate either. I'm mainly to, um, protect small businesses that are operating on narrow profit margins.
Sam, Kathy?
Do you wanna go first, or should I? Okay, okay. Again, um, as Mr. Spelly and his colleagues know, I've followed this pretty closely for fifteen years or so, and, and seen this, seen this pitch. Uh, I am in favor of, uh, a split rate move, uh, to the least shift amount possible, uh, over the next year for several reasons. Um, one is that I think that it's important to look for opportunities to reduce the tax burden on residential property owners. And I know Mr. Spelly makes a convincing argument that there's not a lot of money in it for residents if we do this shift. On the other hand, uh, a lot of money is relative, and, uh, I hear a lot of folks saying that I'm stressed financially nowadays, and so I think it's important to continue our efforts, as we've done in other ways as well, to try to provide some tax relief for, uh, residential property taxpayers. And the split rate is attractive in one sense for me, and that, that actually does offer an opportunity to, uh, shift some tax burden to people who don't live in Southborough. So people who both, uh, own and support some of these businesses actually live outside of town, so it's an opportunity for us to broaden our tax base a little bit. And a, a big comment that we hear frequently, and even tonight, is that, um, this makes a difference in terms of business decisions to locate in town or to hire people. And I've, again, followed, and I know E D C has written letters and various other, uh, business communities annually. We got one from the Metro West, I think, uh, group, um, make that pitch. But, uh, a number of years ago, E D C actually arranged for an economist from, uh, Northeastern, Dr. Barry Bluestone, to come in and make some presentations to the committee. And at that point, this is about ten years ago, I guess now, Barry was saying that, uh, you know, tax rate does make a difference. However, in twenty-twenty, Barry released a study of twenty-five municipalities in Massachusetts and looked for, um, econometric analysis to say, how do, how do businesses make decisions to either locate in towns or to add employees? And it turned out that the, um, the key employment and new establishment factors, the, the one that had the most impact are things like economic development, marketing, for example, so maybe we need to bump the E D C marketing budget, available sites, timely permitting, and site amenities. And there are some other lesser factors in that as well. And the things that he determined were not a significant factor, in fact, a negative correlation, were physical attractiveness of the town or city, low, local tax rates, i.e., split, split tax didn't make a difference, cultural amenities, and rents costs, as a matter of fact. So I, I guess I don't buy the argument that this is gonna make, uh, businesses flee Southborough or it's gonna make people avoid Southborough. And I think this is worth a, an effort to see how... And I think this is worth an effort to see how this works. And so I've supported it in the past, and I continue to support a, the minimum possible shift toward split tax rate, higher commercial, industrial, and lower residential. So I expect to be outvoted, but I think it's worth making the point. And we've not heard from Mr. Geary this year, so that saved us some time, but he, speaking through me, I guess. Thank you.
So I'm glad you went first. I forgot that you support a split tax rate. So what do you mean, what's your minimum? How do you define your minimum?
The state actually limits you in terms of your ability to move in any year, and Paul, I can't remember the minimum amount, but it's like a 5% shift or something like that.
I believe you could do a 1. I mean, I'm not sure that there's a minimum.
I thought there were, okay, what's the maximum you can do then?
150.
150%? So I think I'd proposed 10% shift in the past, and 5% or 10% to me would be, I think, I'm interested in testing the infrastructure. Try it, see if it works, make sure we can handle it administratively, and if it doesn't work, we can always, you know, pull back. But it gives us an option that we can execute quickly and reliably if we get to a point going forward, that we really need to find a way to provide a little relief to the residential taxpayers. So that's where I am.
So theoretically, so I don't support the split tax rate, but I want to find relief too for residents, but I want to find it by finding ways to reduce the overall budget, not trying to shift from one group to the other. And with all respect to Mr. Bluestone, the vaunted economist, rent does play a role in making decisions where to go. That's just a fact. I mean, he can say all he wants to, it doesn't, but it does. And of course, the rent, the real estate taxes that the landlords pay will determine the rent they charge, so your rent is going to be based on the expenses that they incur. So the other things may not, but absolutely someone's going to look at rent to, as part of a decision. Anyway, we can talk about that further.
I look at rent too, but I guess I'm most interested, I actually do buy locations in my day job, and, you know, I look at labor market primarily, you know, where can I find employees that have the skills that I'm looking for? And I'm happy to pay a little more if I've got a rich labor market where I can find staff.
I didn't say it was only.
Yeah, but anyways.
But I think, I think it's a big factor.
We need to debate that tonight.
Okay, so I just wanted to recap where we left off at town meeting, as far as what we told town meeting what this would look like, because now we know what it's going to look like.
You mean anticipated shift?
Well, let's talk about what we said when we did this, because it's actually-
Okay.
-pretty impressive what, you know, we said 13.92, it's 13.91. But we go to town meeting, and I, we try, advisory especially tries very hard to make sure everyone there knows that the impact of the budget that's being proposed is estimated, because Paul hasn't finished, and Lori haven't finished her work on valuation. So in the past, until COVID, we weren't too worried about this shift, because we didn't have the shift. And this is two years in a row, we've had this shift between the two classes. So what we did in, with advisory in February, March, is we did these projections, assuming there was going to be a 12% shift, 12% increase in residential real estate and a 4% decrease in commercial. So a 16% spread, it's actually only eight. So that's why the actual tax increase for residences is less than what we projected, it's gone the right way. So we projected 5.84, instead it's 4.83. So it's a whole point less, so that's good. The new growth, Paul and Brian are always conservative with that, they said, we always use 450,000 as the increase in taxes, that's 720, so that's good. So those two things are why it, the actual results are better than what we had projected at town meeting, because we were conservative, right? So that's all good. And I bet Paul knows what my next question is going to be. This is November, 1/124 will be based on 2023 sales. So can you put, will you do your crystal ball and tell us what you think?
I took some very basic look at the 10 months of the sales in '23 to kind of see where we are. The good news is, it does not look like we're going to have anywhere near the increases. I think there will be a little bit of an increase, but I don't think it's going to be significantly more than where the commercial and industrial go. So I don't think we're really going to have to calculate much, if any, type of shift during the budget. Again, we'll revise that as we get into it in January. I'll have 12 months of sales, we'll start running some quicker, you know, I'm not going to have 100% on what's happening, but I think we'll be able to hone in a little bit better. But nothing like we've seen, I mean, this is unprecedented these two years.
Yeah.
And we've never during the budget process really had to, you know, put these parameters in and think, you know, what are we going to do and really consider a shift, because it's, it really hasn't been anything like this. So I don't see it, Kathy, I don't really see a big, a big deal with this and having to really calculate something large. Again, we'll revise it in January, February, as we get through the budget process.
So we're probably going to vote on tonight the actual town meeting date, but it's going to be March, one way or the other, right?
Yeah.
It's just a question of which Saturday. And we've got a little ARPA money, you know, we threw a lot of ARPA money at the budget last year to keep it down, right? We threw it at capital. So we've got a little money this year we could still use to do it, but it's not as big as last year, and so the question will be, do we do it or do we not? And it will all depend on what you think at that point as far as what 1124 looks like compared to 1123.
Again, the finance team, I can only speak briefly to it, but I think you know our position is kind of, you know, when you look at large sums of free cash or even ARPA money, their one-time monies or a couple of years' worth of monies, it's not way to, it's not the way to build a budget, you're building a house of cards. We've preached this multiple times. You've got to get off the one-time money.
But do we get off, you know, do we do it cold turkey this year, or do we go down one more time and then get off of it?
One of the big reasons we were using it, just so people understand, is because of the shift.
Yeah.
It was unprecedented, to kind of soften the blow. But at the end of the day, you've got to get back to structural soundness, and that's really what matters when budgeting. And I think it's really, really important that we really buckle down. And one of the things, when you see Brian will put together, you know, the preliminary numbers, we have a large free cash number, as you know, we're probably only injecting 1.2 or 1.3 billion or 1.5 million into it, and start there, and then have discussions on what to do with the rest of the free cash. But throwing it even on capital, you know, there's a certain amount of capital that has to be built in the budget every year. We've talked about the finance team, Mark's talked numerous times to you about it. It's really time to stop using the one-time monies. DOR, it's interesting, so the DOR oversees the tax rate, we have them come out and look at the recap, which is the packet that goes into them. He indicated something that he never really told us before. He oversees 135 communities, and they call it the dashboard, all the metrics and everything. And Southborough, Southborough is one of only two towns that beeps, because we have very little reserves, we are using all our free cash, no-nos, 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 and liking, you know, brighter. But the only reason why we get through is because we have a lot of levy capacity. Anybody who's been around long enough knows, levy capacity can go like that. Couple of years, you can blow through it. So structural soundness is really what we need to aim towards. So it's got to start this year. You can't fool around.
So this is starting to veer a little bit off topic-
But this is important.
...of the classification hearing, and I also want to make sure we have time for public comment, if there's any, but.
One more comment, so.
Is there public comment?
I want to wrap up this phase, so we can get to the public comment and-
This is important, Andrew, this is our tax bill for fiscal year '24. So when you start with zero, and then you're going to say, okay, this year we're just going to put the whole thing in there, that itself jumps up the tax rate like 1.5% to start out with. So that's the problem with going from what we did last year, zero, and saying, okay, we're going to just cold turkey, we're going to take us off of it. So we'll see, more to, more to come as far as that goes, but-
Long road ahead.
I had to ask, see what you thought about it.
Is there any public comment on the tax classification hearing about the single rate, split rate, residential exemption, shift within CIP classes? Hello?
Good evening, my name's Karen Chapman, I'm the president of the Court of Nine, 495 Regional Chamber of Commerce, not Metro West, Sam, but thank you. You have my letter. I've been here for the past nine years as the chamber president, but we're always strongly advocating for a single tax classification. A lot of the points have already been made by your town assessor, but I also think that it's very important that you said rates, rents do matter to small business, and I have certainly a couple of examples of lots of towns and cities that have gone to other neighboring towns because of favorable rates. And seeing some of those towns have now gone back to going to single tax rates because of that. So I'm here to strongly support the continuation of single tax rate, and I thank you for the opportunity to state our position.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? All right. No one on the line? Okay, so seeing none, three separate votes. So the first vote, I move that Southborough continue to follow the single rate.
Second.
All those in favor? All opposed? Four to one, yes. I move that Southborough not adopt the residential exemption.
Second.
All those in favor? All opposed? And I move that the board not adopt the small commercial exemption.
Second.
All those in favor? All opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, so now do we need to close the public hearing too? Or is that necessary?
Might as well.
Okay. I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you all.
Thanks very much. See you next year.
All right. Okay, so we're running a little behind schedule, but we're now, the next item on the agenda are two committee appointments. Mr. Desmond?
I'm sorry. Sorry, we have a liquor license application.
Would you like me to read this?
Yes, please.
Notice here, by giving under chapter 138 of the Mass General laws that Gargios Incorporated, DBA, Southborough House of Pizza, is applied for a transfer of an annual on-premise wine and malt alcoholic beverages license currently held by Southborough House of Pizza Incorporated, located at Five Main Street, Southborough, Mass, described as a two-story building containing approximately 2,400 square feet on the first floor, approximately 800 square feet of function hall space on the second floor, with one dining room, one kitchen with storage in the kitchen area, one front entrance, and one rear entrance. Proposed manager on record is Isaac Gayed. Public hearing will be held by the Select Board acting as the local license authority in the Thomas W. McCall of Hearing Room, second floor of the Townhouse, 17 Common Street, Southborough, Mass, Tuesday, November 7, 2023, at 7:30 PM.
Thank you. Is the applicant here, would like to make a presentation?
The attorney's here. I told my clients when I got the agenda, it was 7:45. I apologize if the advertisement says 7:30, so I don't, they're not here yet.
And they're coming?
Yes, they are.
Okay.
So do you want to do the-
The agenda said 7:45, I apologize. So if you want to pivot and do the interviews first, we can-
Okay, yes.
Very much so.
So we'll wait, we'll table this for now.
So Paul against a?
Yes, you are? Actually, we're not behind schedule. Well, I'm certainly familiar with who you are, but I thank you for volunteering for one of the open spots on ShopC with the term to expire June 2026. Here's a quick opportunity to introduce slash reintroduce yourself and explain why you're interested in the ShopC position.
Sure, thank you, thanks for having me. My name's Paul Desmond, I've been a Southborough resident since 2004, right before the Red Sox won the World Series, very easy to remember. I've been on the school committee since 2011, starting at the Southborough School Committee for three terms, and I'm currently serving my third term on the regional school. Been involved with government in that capacity, and ShopC's just been an interest of mine because, you know, I think in the state, probably the country-
I think I'm having a little trouble hearing you.
Sorry.
Okay, move the micro, could you move the microphone? Thank you, Paul.
I've been interested in ShopC just because the whole issue of affordable housing has been a concern of mine for quite some time, and I think it's only getting worse. Couple of things kind of brought it to the fore in recent weeks, months. I don't know if you saw this Globe Spotlight series focusing on this issue, and the first piece was about Milton. I grew up in Braintree, right next door, so I'm very familiar with Milton, and I do think it's got a lot of similarities with Southborough in terms of demographics and so forth, so that kind of hit home. And then the MBTA zoning law, and I see that as an opportunity really to address, you know, this issue. I know a lot of people don't see it that way, but I attended a couple of the planning board sessions on this, one, the first one where they were just introducing it, and the other one last week, I think, we did like a workshop basically, trying to figure out where we put these zoning areas. And it's clear to me we can do that without, you know, a lot of angst, so, and that I would imagine is something that would be of interest to ShopC, so I guess that's about it, that's where I'm coming from.
Thanks. Anyone have any questions?
Thank you for applying, I appreciate it. Could you tell me a little bit about what you, what direction you think ShopC should be taking? Have you given that any thought, or?
I haven't really, other than, you know, fulfilling its mission, which is to bring affordable housing to Southborough.
Okay.
And again, I do think that MBTA law is a huge opportunity for the town.
Okay, thank you.
I guess one thing I would make a plug for while you're here is, we want to do a better job using the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which has been built up and built up. And we haven't been able to really put those monies to good use, so one of the things that has been discussed at ShopC is a annual warrant article so that CPC money that goes towards community housing could be just automatically transferred each year to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, so that the Affordable Housing Trust Fund has the money and is able to kind of quickly act on an opportunity, which is before it, without having to go to, you know, two or three or four different boards and have a public hearing discussion among multiple different boards, and that slows everything down. So that's just one thing, that's one of our priorities, and I hope it's also one of the continued priorities of ShopC.
Thank you. Certainly take that under consideration.
So thanks, Paul, for stepping up to do this. I thought you were a school committee even before '11, it seems like you've always been on the school committee, which is not, that's a compliment, not a criticism. So to kind of piggyback what Andrew just said, the advantage of the affordable housing funds being in the Affordable House Trust, which is controlled by the trustees and not the town, the trustees are the Select Board for now and two other people, but we can make decisions, we can buy property, we don't have to go through town meetings. So, you know, sometimes you've got to act fast when there's something available. The seller is not going to say, oh, I'll wait two town meetings or whatever it takes to do it, right? So that's the advantage of getting the money moved over, but we can talk about that later. I think more importantly, we're not sure we've got the right structure as far as truly trying to get something done. You heard what Mr. Sibelli said, and if I could have talked a little bit more, I was about to say the following. The average house price in Southborough now is almost 900, that's the average, so you just take the total assessed value divided by the number of houses, right? And so if you've got expensive houses, I think the most expensive house is assessed at $5.8 million. Those expensive houses skew that high. The more important number, I think, is the median price, which is 812. So that just means you take all the houses and pick the one in the middle, right? So that's, I mean, $812,000, so it really is expensive to live in this town now. So Mr. Hamilton ran to impart to the Select Board because he's so interested in this, he works with Habitat for Humanity, knows how to do it. So we just need to find a way to leverage this money we have and get some stuff done. So yes, Affordable House Trust is a better place for the money, but more importantly, we've got to find a way to truly get some practical score in here and get some stuff built that's truly affordable, and not just a 40B, 20% discount off, you know, a high rent, which is what that accomplishes. So I'm really glad that you are going to do this. I think you'll be very important in trying to get this done with us, so.
Thanks, and thank you also for volunteering here. I think it's useful to reinforce that one of the Select Board's goals for FY '24 is actually to make progress on affordable housing. And also, the state's definition of affordable housing is not affordable, basically, and so part of our challenge is to find a way to actually make real progress with that, so. And I think you've got a great background, we know you well, and we will bypass the usual 100 questions that we ask about for your last 20 years, what have you been doing? So accelerate this process, so thank you, and I strongly support your appointment. Thanks.
Thanks, Sam, appreciate that.
My only, my only comment would be that I hope that the older houses that could possibly be, you know, become affordable housing would be sort of, they're sort of town treasures, and I'd like to see- they're sort of town treasures, and I'd like to see as many saved as possible.
Okay, thanks.
All right, I move that the board point Paul Desmond to ShopC for a term to expire June 30, 2026.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. Thank you very much for volunteering.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think we'll now go back to the liquor license transfer. So sir, are your clients here?
Everyone's here, Mr. Chair.
Okay, great. Please come on up. Okay, all right. Not here yet because we put on for eight o'clock. I thought we were running behind. We're actually running ahead. I was wrong, okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Tom Truax. I'm attorney in Salem, Massachusetts. I'm here on behalf of this prospective transferee, which is Gualgios Inc., doing business at Southborough House of Pizza. And with me, I'm introduced to my right is Mr. Isaac Gayed. He's the president of the corporation. He's also the proposed licensed manager. And to my left is Mr. Reta Benhaman, and he's the treasurer of the corporation. These are the two principles of the corporation, the principles of the business that'll be running the business. The underlying transaction is fairly straightforward. It's a sale of assets of the business known as Southborough House of Pizza, which includes a transfer of the Section 12 Restaurant Wine and Malt Beverages License to the buyers here. And the seller substantially selling all of those assets. There is seller financing provided, and I provided a copy of the promissory note, proposed note, and proposed pledge agreement. So the seller is requesting that there be approval of a pledge of license as part of the collateral for this seller financing, this loan. As for, as experienced, both Mr. Gayed and Mr. Benhaman are tip certified or serve safe alcohol certified. As to Mr. Gayed, while he has not worked at a pizza shop that sells beer and wine, he has, he is currently and has been the manager at a 7-Eleven Westboro with a beer and wine license. And as he and I have talked about, I do a lot of these with pizza shops and with 7-Elevens and other convenience stores. And a package store sells an awful lot of beer and wine, so there's a lot of, and tobacco products. So there's a lot of checking IDs going on, I'm sure a lot more than what goes on at Southborough House of Pizza. So I think it'll be in good hands with Mr. Gayed. He indicates there's been, he's been there since 2016, so that's about seven years worth of experience with beer and wine. There have been no violations at the Westboro 7-Eleven store as well. He's very familiar, as I said, with the carding process, and he's going to be certain that there's no violations that take place at this restaurant. As for Mr. Benhaman, he has been working and training with the owner, with Mr. Christos, at the restaurant, the current restaurant for the past month, and will continue to do so until the license is approved by the town, by the ABCC. So he'll rack up about three months of training. In addition, prior to this, he worked at the, at a Ashland Pizza and for two and a half years. And that was a, just like this house, Southborough House of Pizza, it served beer and wine. So he's got about, he'll have about almost three years worth of experience as well. So the two of them together, I think you're going to have a good pair in charge of the beer and wine, in charge of the restaurant. As for the operating, the operation of the store, the hours remain the same. Physical layout of the store is going to remain the same. Employees that wish to remain are going to remain. So there's going to be a continuity of ownership here, which is a good thing when you have a transfer of ownership. And we thank you for your consideration. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks. I have one question. So in the, in the packet materials we have, there's an email about status of proof of liquor liability insurance. And so could you just update the board on what the status of that is?
All right, well, you know, as I was mentioning to Melanie on this, I do a lot of this. I deal with a lot of cities and towns. And as I indicated, there is a difficulty with insurance agents writing a policy prior to a closing. So in this case, we in fact got a policy for, you know, the liability, not the liquor liability. We've got a policy for liability. We put a random date on. We picked October, November 1st, I believe it was, and we're already well past that. So that's the problem that erupts. So typically what a town will allow, and I've never run into it where they wouldn't, a city or a town, is that it's a TBD, it's to be determined. So at the time of the closing, obviously, as a condition for the issuance of the license by the city or the town, they have to prove, prepare, you know, provide up-to-date certificate of insurance. And if liquor liability insurance is required by the city or town, same thing for that. But that's the problem. It's very difficult to get insurance companies to write something, especially with a liquor license, because the ABCC is about four, five, six weeks in terms of turnover. And in terms of this case, this was submitted to the town around September 7th, but it took a couple of months to get all the things that you, Southborough wanted that were, you know, a little bit different than a lot of the cities in town. So it took a while. And so as a result, as you can see, it's an up and near issue trying to get insurance. So, you know, it's a moving target, but we'll obviously have it at the time of any closing and any issuance by the town of the license.
So you're suggesting that we could almost hold it in escrow, and then after proof was submitted, then?
Well, you're required to submit it to the ABCC.
Approve.
You can do it two things. You can make it a condition, you know, your approval condition upon receipt of those certificates.
Yep.
Or, in Melanie's case, giving, actually giving out the certificate. She's not going to give it out until the proof of insurance is. It's your choice.
Okay, thank you. Kathy?
So I just have one question. This was a big package. Thank you for putting it together.
This is a big change, so you're going to be a landlord now. So who is Anba Karasik?
That's my corporation versus a 7-Eleven.
Okay, which has nothing to do with this, or does? Okay, so it just.
If there was, don't forget, the ABCC requires bank statements. So I don't remember off the top of my head. If there was bank statements provided for purposes of where the money was coming from, I just don't know.
No, this is just the thing you print from the Secretary of State that shows the annual port stuff for that entity. So I didn't know what it was, because I wouldn't refer it anyplace here. So can we just go back over the, look, the, it sounds like it's chicken and egg. Okay, so tonight you want us to vote to issue the license, correct?
To approve the license, not to issue it.
Okay, to approve it, right? And that's good enough to go to the ABCC?
Yes.
Okay, and then we won't hand you the license until we have the deck page showing that you've got.
Whatever, every city and town's a little bit different, but in this case, yes.
Could we vote to issue contingent on delivery of that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it normally, and the attorney's absolutely correct, it usually takes in the short term, three to four weeks. It can take as much as six weeks for the state to, the ABCC to come back and approve the license. So that would give them plenty of time to take care of any of these other issues. You also, tonight, got under your consent agenda because that didn't require a hearing, the approval of the common victualist license for Southborough House of Pizza. I believe that they've just got a final inspection that needs to be done for that. That can happen, you know, as well, and that would be held, obviously, until that is done, so.
So you're not going to close until you actually have the ABCC?
Yeah, that's, if you read the person's telegram, and any person's telegram.
I read most of it, but I did it pretty fast, so I did read it.
It's always a condition that the ABCC, that's the last step. So once we get the ABCC approval, we then schedule the closing. If it's with a bank, then we have to coordinate with the bank, you know, so on and so forth.
All right, nothing for me, but I do wish you well.
Thank you very much.
Al, do you have?
Sure. First, welcome to Southborough, and I hope you are successful. Because we need, we need a Southborough House of Pizza. And, yeah, I'm, I think you've done heroic work just filling out the applications. So that's really all I have to say.
Also glad to hear that the Southborough House of Pizza will continue. Yes, but you're signing up for a lot of hard work. That's the other part.
Question, Mr. Gayed, are you going to be managing the site now full-time? Is that correct?
Yes.
So no more 7-Eleven in Westboro?
No, I still, between here and there, but there I get a manager too, so over there I don't have to go to crazy hours, maybe 20, 25 hours.
Okay, but you will not then be full-time in Southborough?
Oh, yeah, definitely. I'm going to be here full-time.
Oh, but how can you be full-time here and spend time in Westboro?
Working hard. They're too close, you know?
They're only four miles apart.
Few hours here.
Okay.
Ten hours here.
Also, in terms of staff continuity, is it likely that the current staff will continue?
Would hope.
Hard to know for sure, but you think that's likely? Okay, good, okay. Again, welcome and best wishes for success here, so thank you.
Okay. So are we approving a transfer or the?
Transfer.
Okay, yes. So I move that the board any public comment before we?
No hands up in the audience.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I move that the board approve a transfer of liquor license for Southborough House of Pizza to Gualgios Inc.
A contingent on?
On the condition that the applicant produced to the town satisfactory evidence of insurance, including liquor liability insurance.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you.
One other thing we just asked you to vote on for the record is the approval of the pledge of the license for the seller financing. It's not part of the public hearing. It's not required to have a public hearing, but it's required to vote on it.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you very much.
Do we want to deal with a CV license now or later?
That's on the consent agenda.
No questions for that?
We'll take care of it. I move that the board approve consent agenda item. B.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck. To everybody.
We're not going anywhere. We're Southborough. I said you know.
I move that we close the public hearing.
So moved, second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think so. Yeah, I think it has to be. So our other, other appointment is not here then, basically? Ah, okay.
Sidewalk monies. I related all that to the chair of CIPC, and since that time, he's met with Bill Condeff, and they're preparing to, aiming for January to get us some type of recommendation on that. So that's good. Second, yeah?
But to be clear, that doesn't eliminate the original request. We still want them to come back with a comprehensive recommendation for sidewalks all over, but at least takes the time pressure off that by doing the short work and getting the ARPA money out of the way.
Yeah, the key is that it's not going to wait for beta.
Right.
Okay.
The big, the big one is, but this one's not.
Okay. Second, Mr. Malinowski also contacted us about the Community Center Exploration Committee, which is nearing the end of their work, and owes the select board a presentation at some point. The charge expires at the end of this calendar year, but they would prefer to come in and make a presentation in January instead, and are looking, that would require extending their charge at least to the end of January. So I just mentioned that under preview of coming attractions. Veterans Day ceremony is this Saturday, November 11th, 11:00 AM, and I'm planning to speak. I think we've seen some emails about who's marching and seen some positive responses. So that's good. It's a pretty short march. It's just from the community center to the All Porches Memorial. Also, as you've probably seen, Mass Housing issued a project eligibility for 250 Turnpike Road. So the current status, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, is the comprehensive permit application for 120 Turnpike Road has been filed. That was filed on November, yes, with the ZBA on November 1st. And the 250 comprehensive permit application would be coming shortly. So that's a big deal. ZBA is going to have three pending 40B comprehensive permits.
All at once.
All at once, after several years of one issued permit tied up in litigation. And one final update I have is the Tricentennial Committee. We had our first meeting last week. Vanessa did a great job of getting us prepared, and the committee elected Don Morris as the chair and Ginny Martins as the vice chair. And one of the things that we discussed was the need to find out if we need to ask town meeting for some seed money to get this Tricentennial Committee going. And if so, how much? And we'd have to do that fairly soon so that it would be considered on the upcoming annual town meeting warrant. So that's all I've got under chair's report for.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
On the 250 Turnpike, does, does the board want to provide a letter similar to the one we did on 120? It's obviously going to be a bit more nuanced, but.
You know, I think that's a good point. Maybe we'll put it on the next agenda for consideration because yeah, I think that's a good point.
I think we should, because if we don't, then I think it sends a message that we're not intending to send, which is, we don't support it, since we sent a support letter for 120. So I think we should with the nuances that Al's referring to.
Okay, thank you. That's a good point. So on members' report?
Starting on.
You want to talk, talk about the regional dispatch update?
Sure. Sam and I have been busy. We spent part of an afternoon at the Neshoba Regional Dispatch Center. That is a small dispatch center. That is, they serve seven different communities, but they're all relatively small, serving only about 35,000 people. It is not as technically sophisticated as the Holbrook one, but we did, I did get some very good sort of economic data. They charge each of their communities exactly the same amount, because essentially each of these communities that they serve has, has exactly the same problem that we have, which is, you know, they have to have some minimum level of staffing. And so their avoided costs are almost identical in each case. Each community pays about $200,000 a year. And just by comparison, you know, our current target is right a little over $600,000. And so it is a traditional rec in terms of its governance structure and its assessment process. The second thing we did was we went and visited Foxborough. Foxborough is a very glitzy sort of site. They serve four communities. And sort of the interesting thing is, within two of those communities, there are large venues which can place a substantial burden on a dispatch staff. In fact, they actually have an operation that works in, at Gillette Stadium. So it's, it was the interest, the other sort of interesting thing is, while others, recs that we've met have, you know, reasonable ways, if, you know, things don't work out, you can exit. This appeared to be much more difficult. The overall observation that I have is that the whole landscape is in a state of flux. That is, not all of the wrecks that are envisioned or are being formed are going to survive. This is a race to scale, and scale is measured in populations of hundreds of thousands. And I spoke to the folks at Neshoba, and they've got a plan to try and get to 100,000 fairly soon. Holbrook was at 200,000. Foxborough is at about 100,000. Holbrook was at 200,000, Foxborough is at about 100,000, not counting the 70,000 that show up for a football game or some other event. I think we have now visited the relative, relevant cast of characters and it is time to sort of move into the next phase. And I think the next phase starts with sitting down with Mark and the chiefs to sort of talk about how we want to proceed. But I think we will rapidly come up to the point where we need to take this off the members' report and put it on, you know, a more formal basis with the... With the committee.
Sam, anything you want to add to that?
Nope. Al's comments are very comprehensive, I think we now have a good view of the landscape. And at least for me, there is no immediately obvious solution, but some interesting choices, so I think more to discuss.
Kathy, I think the next item is yours.
So the NEARI Building Committee is a committee that, the ad hoc committee that was formed to basically make the decision as to whether to close the school and what to do with NEARI. Unlike the Public Safety Building, this committee is, works directly with the state on this project. So we're not independently doing this, we have agreed to work with the Massachusetts School Building Authority, the MSBA, on the project. So we've got a very well-defined set of rules and procedures we have to work within to get this done. And the pro of doing that is, the MSBA provides quite a bit of funds to help us build this. Not anywhere near as much as what we got with the last three schools where they provided 63%. We're looking at effectively about 20%, unless the state does something to add more money to the pot that the MSBA can work from. The problem is, construction costs have gone up so much, the MSBA limits what they're going to reimburse you for. So if there were no limit, we'd get 38%. And it's based on a town's relative wealth as far as where you fall with that. Least, less wealthy towns would get more, more wealthy towns would get less. But because of construction costs, that 38 gets pared down to about 20%. So we're looking at footing a much bigger share of the bill for what we do than what we did in 2000, 2001, 2002 with Trotty or Finn and Woodward. And construction costs, of course, are much more expensive per square foot now than they were back then too. It's not, I mean, it's a multiple. So the committee is off and running, and again, we've got to follow these rules of state. So what, the first thing we had to do was form three subcommittees. So Finance Committee, Communications Committee, and a Designer Selection Committee. So there are seven of us on the committee and we've all kind of broken up into pieces and as always, I'm on the Finance Committee with Andrew Pfaff and one other person. So everybody's got their little subcharge to carry forward with. The one decision that's been made that's very important is, we have selected a outside project manager, or owner's project manager, to basically lead us through the whole process, not just the design phase, but through the construction phase. And this is a long-term project, we're talking, last time we looked at this, you know, it could be 2029, before it's actually finished. So, you know, we've got a long way to go before we truly have a project that is done. And the MSBA process does slow this down quite a bit, which is one of the cons of working with them. So Stanska is the owner's project manager. So that's done. We are now in the process, the Subcommittee that is, the Designs Committee is in the process of selecting a designer to actually design the project and do the feasibility study that the MSBA is requiring. So we signed a contract with MSBA saying we're going to look at three things. We're going to look at closing Finn and moving one grade to NEARI, closing Finn, moving two grades to NEARI, and not closing Finn and just rehabbing NEARI in its current footprint. So that's our three choices. We've agreed with MSBA that we will look at all three, that's the feasibility phase of this. And then from there, we will make a decision as to which one to go forward with. So that's kind of where we are at this point. I will do regular updates of this as time goes on and things start to pick up, but we're getting there, so decisions are being made at this point. But that's where we're not, there's still no numbers to talk about, we're a long way away from that point other than to say it's going to be, no matter what choice, very expensive.
Andrew?
Yes.
Could I add one item?
Absolutely.
Late addition before the agenda, after the agenda was set. I had the pleasure of attending the Asabet Votech 50th Anniversary of their facility up in Marlboro. Very impressive event, as a matter of fact. They obviously have been around for a while and I think South Borough students have benefited from that. We get a certain number of slots there each year. And they are actually at capacity now, they're trying to figure out ways to expand and they need state money to do that. But one of the things that was interesting to me is, we had a tour of a number of the classrooms. We got to see some of the building trades classes, the technology and the healthcare classes. And I was, as a former teacher, I was always challenged to keep the back row crowd awake in the classroom. There was nobody I saw that was not fully engaged, student and teachers. Everybody was doing something, they were working on projects very actively, enthusiastically, which I think is a wonderful learning environment. So I don't think Asabet gets a lot of visibility in South Borough, but I would certainly encourage families with children who are approaching 7th, 8th grade, looking for high school, to at least look into that as a possibility, because for a lot of kids, I think that's a huge opportunity. And clearly, there's a real job opportunity for things like technology and building trades. I tell people, my plumber drives a lot more expensive car than I do, so there's a lot of money in that world certainly. So again, I would encourage people to at least be aware of that and look at it. And I think we ought to try to figure out ways to increase our capacity there, which sounds like a challenge because it's a very popular program. So, great privilege to attend and again, very interesting event, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The, I do also want to, off of Mr. Styra's comments, just give a plug for us about, they've been very good, South Borough, in terms of giving back. We've had work done by the students, the golf clubhouse. They redid the entire outside of the clubhouse, put the deck on. And right now, you can see them working, the junior and senior classes, they alternate each week, working down the senior center, putting on the addition. So they do great work and they've been very supportive of our projects and we appreciate that. Two quick items. The first one that I was asked to pass on by Ms. Hale is that the video stream is not working right now with YouTube and Zoom. So the people that you see in our room that are participating, they can only hear us. Can't see us, for some of us, it's not a bad thing. But, you know, they are able to watch it live on the government channel or on the SAM website. So that's just a PSA. And so the people that are, you know, in the room, so when Orla Daly does her interview for her position momentarily, after I stop speaking, we won't get to see her. We'll just get to, we'll just get to hear. Second thing, the only other thing that I had, I just wanted to acknowledge the employee recognition event that the board hosted breakfast last week. It was a great event. We budget to do this like, once a year. Based on that event, I'm hoping the board is going to be amenable when you see some increase in that budget line this year to add some more events. We did have about 40, 50 people went. I was extremely pleased, every board member came. And sometimes the board members tend, excuse me, to kind of settle at a table and just kind of hang at the table. Board members moved around the room and really got to talk with everybody that was there. Again, 40 to 50 people came. It's hard to find things to do for, you know, for employees and everything and that. The one unifying thing I think we've found over the years is food. Right? So, and people really appreciated that, and I do want you to know that if they did not reach out to you directly, a lot of thank yous were said on the way out of the room and after the fact. So people do really appreciate that. I do want to acknowledge, the board issued, gave certificates out to employees who've been with the town for at least 25 years. The dean of the event, no pun intended, was Dean Sibelli, who's been with the town for 35 years. Bridget Galaney, been with DPW for 35 years. George Mooney, DPW, 33 years. Kim Ivors with the library, 29 years. Tim Slakovic, Police Sergeant, 28 years. Gene Johnson, DPW, 26 years. And Cindy Beard with the Council on Aging, 25 years. So congratulations to them, we really appreciate them being part of our team and appreciate the board supporting and giving back, you know, in this way to the employees, it is appreciated. So, thank you.
So I think now we move back to appointments.
Yes.
Okay.
So Ms. Daly is...
Is Ms. Daly available?
Yes.
You're on mute. There we go.
Okay, good.
Well, thanks for joining us and thanks for your interest in the Municipal Technology Committee. I know that Matt Probst had sent an email strongly supporting your interest in application for this committee. But if you could please just tell us a little bit about yourself and your interest in the MTC, that would be appreciated.
Will do, so I know you guys realize I can't see you, but are you able to see me?
Yes, we can, that...
Okay, perfect.
And I apologize for our technology issue on our end.
It's ironic.
It is ironic.
We need you, need you badly on the MTC.
There we go. So my name is Orla Daly, I've been a resident of South Borough now for 20, nearly 20 years, I guess. And Matt reached out recently about the opportunity to join the MTC. I am currently CIO at Skillsoft, which is a learning company, but have had a 20-plus career, year career in technology, having worked locally at EMC and Dell, as well as at National Grid. So very familiar, obviously, with how technology can help drive operational efficiency as well as ultimately business transformation. So a lot of what Matt shared in terms of how the town is trying to improve the leverage of technology, whether that's to meet either the residents' needs or help the team members within the town teams and committees and staff to be able to work more effectively or be more productive, very much aligns with a lot of what I've been doing on a professional basis and therefore was more than happy to put my name forward to see if I could help.
And is this your first time volunteering for a town committee?
It is. I was on the extended, South Borough extended day board for many years. Obviously, that recently disbanded, but I was involved in that for quite some time. But this is my first time in terms of a town committee.
Wonderful. Who would like to begin? Anyone else have any questions? Sam?
Again, I'd offer our thanks for your volunteering for this. This is a, I've always thought, extremely important committee. I think you will find that we are making good progress in some areas and we are in the dark ages in other areas. And so the challenge is to try to take advantage of what technology offers for us in a world where we've got limited resources for staffing and technology expenditures. So it's an ongoing balance to try to find the resources to do the things that make sense. And we've sort of been threading the needle on that for a number of years and we hope that we can continue to make good progress. And again, one of the key things is expertise from the Technology Committee, where we've got a number of folks who are very skilled at these things, I think can be very helpful in terms of keeping us on the right track. So again, thank you and we appreciate your volunteering.
Excellent, happy to help.
Kathy?
So, Orla, thank you for stepping up. I think you'll enjoy this committee. Matt Probst's recommendation is all I need. We've got a lot of things we're going to start working on in the next couple of months, so you're joining at a really good time.
Awesome, yeah, no, I'm looking, Matt did share some of what the team has been working on and the strategy document that they pulled together, so certainly looking forward to learning more of what they've already done and what they've learned in terms of the needs as we go forward.
Thank you for volunteering and I'm sure I speak for everybody, let us know what we can do to help.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, that's Al Hamilton, thank you for volunteering. I will merely note that we couldn't afford any of these members if we actually had to pay them.
And clearly, we know you're in it like the rest of us for the big bucks here, so...
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Great income opportunity. Thank you.
I move that the board appoint Orla Daly to the Municipal Technology Committee for a term to expire June 30, 2024.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Unanimous.
Congratulations, thank you very much. And you should write an appointment letter. And then you will come in and get sworn in by our town clerk. Thank you very much.
Excellent, and then we can work on getting Zoom covered.
And next time we meet, I hope that we can both see you and you can see us.
That's right.
Yeah, that'll be the measure of my success. All right.
The first task. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Okay. I'd like to get to the consent agenda and then take a break. So I am going to hold the open session meeting minutes from October 24 because I don't think we have them. Okay. And I'll also hold the executive session meeting minutes from the 26th. Any other holds? So it's about open session minutes from October 26, right?
Yep.
C, D, E, F?
Wait a minute, I'm holding the minutes from 26.
The open session meeting.
Open session.
It was...
Yeah. Yeah, but there's a slight typo in there.
Okay. All right. So, I move that the board approve consent agenda item C, D, E, and F.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Sam, do you have edits to the open session meeting minutes from...
26, line 24, list of documents, talks about the documents at the October 10th meeting, not the October 26th meeting. Just a wrong date in that one.
Any other edits?
That's it. High-level edits.
Okay.
Partner-level.
I move that the board approve the open session meeting minutes for October 26 as amended.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I think that's all we can do with the consent agenda. Yes.
Yep.
I'd like to just take a quick five-minute recess, if that's all right with everyone? Okay, thanks. Harry?
Recording in progress.
Okay. Bringing the meeting back to order. The next item on the agenda is, it's really a two-part item, update on South Union School and discussion of committee charge. So the first part of this is really meant to just update the public. So for people that have been following this, our discussion about 21 Highland and South Union School over the past several months, the primary thing you heard about was the formation of this Future Use Committee for the building, to consider different uses for it. While that has, discussion took place over the last month, St. Matthew's Church, through its pastor, Father Flynn, reached out to the town and the Select Board to express serious interest in acquiring the South Union School building for a Montessori preschool and a basketball court. And actually, the Father Flynn had reached out to the town, actually, several years before we, the most recent expression of interest. So it's been a longstanding interest of his. And the Select Board is interested in the expression of interest that the church had expressed. It looks like it could be a win-win-win situation where the historic building could be preserved without developing the rest of the open space in the property to fund the preservation of the building. We could add a preschool that would help with childcare needs of young parents and also avoid the long-term maintenance costs associated with the building. If there was to be a deal along these lines, there'd be many, many details that still would need to be worked out so that the voters at town meeting could properly consider whether or not it's something that would be good for the town. So that's the public update on that front. So the second part is discussion of the committee charge. Because of this, I feel that we are at a crossroads in that we approved a charge for a nine-member Future Use Committee, and it calls for interim report to the Select Board by January 1, 2024, and interim recommendations of the Select Board by May 15, 2014. But if what the board wants to do is to instead really focus our efforts over the next several months on a potential warrant article for town meeting to consider the expression of interest by the church or potentially other parties that might have similar proposals, we would go down a different route. And in my view, it probably doesn't make sense to have two things going at once. One, a committee where you're appointing people to make an interim report to the Select Board on January 1 while simultaneously working to present something to town meeting by March. So I wanted to open this up for a discussion about board members' thoughts on that.
Can I have a comment?
Absolutely.
I think this is very interesting. I, I guess, one of the strong feelings I have now is, obviously, listening to the feedback we've gotten so far from neighborhood and other comments here, is that this proposal seems to me to check most, if not all, the boxes that the neighborhood felt strongly about. And that, to me, carries a lot of weight here. I think if we do move forward on this, let's take a look, close look at this, track, I think it'd be very important, again, to get neighborhood input to that as we go along. But at least my initial thought is that this does deal very effectively with the concerns that we've heard very strongly from the area, neighborhood here. And I do like the idea of also considering anything else that might come along here to be relatively open and fair about the process. But, you know, again, I don't think it makes a lot of sense to have a committee grinding along with a slightly different charge when we've got a real option in front of us. And so that's where I would be inclined to spend our focus moving forward here.
Anyone else? Al?
Well, I think it probably doesn't make sense to establish a committee right now. I think the real question is, you know, we need fairly quickly to understand whether this is on a path to closure or not. I think there are a number of somewhat thorny issues that need to be dealt with. And so I think we need to establish fairly quickly and, you know, if this is, in fact, you know, on a glide path to town meeting or not. If it isn't, then adjusting the dates on the charge seems like a pretty straightforward thing to do. It's, we've got a charge, we can always modify it.
Is it realistic to do that over the next month here, let's say, do you think, in terms of getting a first-level view that is this...
I think Kathy is our designated point person with the church. Do you think that that's achievable?
I do. I do think Father Flynn is very excited about the project and is taking steps immediately to do what they've got to do, to do their due diligence. They're going to have a parishioner next week that's got a very strong building background go through it. Father Flynn's been through. So no, I do think this, I see no reason why it's not going to move pretty fast.
So one of the things we could do with it, we have approved this committee charge, but we have no applicants for the committee as of yet. I mean, one of the things we could do is just, just wait a month or so, and I think, Al, that's what you're suggesting, right?
The building's not going anywhere.
Yep. And we don't have to appoint anybody.
Correct.
Immediately, so...
Okay. So, you know, part of the reason why I wanted to discuss this in an open session was to provide some transparency about why we would approve a charge for a committee over at least three meetings and then not do anything with it.
Except we didn't know this opportunity was there until very recently.
To me, one kind of lesson learned, I really appreciate Faye, you know, the efforts that you made. We kind of, when this discussion first began, I really hesitated because we just kind of picked one of the FY24 goals on the list and that, you know, you have a struggle as a chair. Do you bring an item for discussion where you really thought through an exact approach on how we deal with it? Instead, we really had kind of an unstructured discussion of it, which then generated a lot of interest and public comment, but it all seems to be working out in a way which is destructive.
But we got very broad community input on that, which I think was very helpful in terms of hearing directly what people are concerned about relative to this. So that was, I think, important.
Okay, I see that Kristin LeVault has her hand up. Kristin, do you want to speak?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. First, I'm going to say, I am, Andrew, I appreciate what you said about wanting to be fully transparent, but I will say this, that I'm, being a member of a couple committees, was clued in on kind of what was happening behind the scenes. But as a citizen, I'd be baffled, discouraged, and frustrated because throughout the petition meetings in September, a special ad hoc meeting where all our committees came together, each and every time, the support for the committee was there. Tonight, there was nothing. And I think, I just went through the 180, 90, however many pages of the meeting materials, there was nothing alluding to a St. Matthew's bargain. There was nothing on the agenda that even alluded to maybe rethinking the path ahead. It just says, "Update on 21 Highland, discussion of committee charge." If I was a citizen, I'd have no idea what you just presented, which does sound, don't get me wrong, it's, from what I've heard, it sounds interesting. It certainly does check a lot of boxes, but it also feels majorly rushed, which honestly was what happened in the first place when people got wind of potentially the board looking to sell 21 Highland. That's what caused all of this in the first place. We came together. We agreed to a committee. We wanted to understand all the options on the table so people in the public could make an informed decision. But here we are again, and it's kind of another curveball, and it's nothing, has nothing to do with the entity or the desire of how they want to use the property. It's just simply, that's an option. And to your point, there's a lot to work out. And do I think there's a big deal waiting a month for more information? Absolutely not. But it's, it's just the way this is all executing. Because as much as it does mark some boxes, I've talked to some people about this, it's also ticked some boxes that people might not like. Do we want to sell another major parcel of town, in town, that's valuable, multiple fronts from open space, historical, et cetera? Do we want to sell that to a private entity? Do we want to lose that tax dollars? I mean, obviously, that's a very sensitive, you know, do we want to lose the asset and the tax dollars, I should say? That's obviously a sensitive, you know, point in town, given other relationships. So I just think that it should be both, to be honest with you. I think we would be really rushing, and I'm kind of curious about the rush to get this into the April, like, it's such a big deal for both entities, to be trying to rush to get it into an April town meeting when we're just rushing to, like, finalize the warrant right now. It seems, I want to understand from you why it's a rush. And the second thing I'd like to understand is why we wouldn't consider doing both. So perhaps in town meeting 2020, you know, March 2025, we have a very complete conversation to say St. Matthew's is one option, but maybe people aren't going to be excited about selling it to a private religious, religious affiliated, you know, entity. Why are we not taking the time to do the committee to find all the options, plus getting the right analysis on this and bringing it to 2025 versus just banning the committee and saying, hey, we all like this idea. This marks all the boxes. Let's go for this.
Kristin, it's Marguerite. Do you think it's a good idea to continue the committee simultaneously? I mean, I'm open to that if you think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I do. I think if you want to take the month to, like, because maybe after a month, this comes off the table. Like, I don't think starting this month, next month, whatever, makes a difference, right? I agree with y'all on that. But I do think we should do both because the intent of the committee was to explore all options. Well, great. Here's one option that got, without us even having to do any of that, got put forward, but it's one option. And the whole point of the committee and the neighborhood and all of the committees involved, open space, historical, you know, CPC was like, we want to know all the options. We don't want to be told one option.
I don't see, I don't see there's any reason to not do the committee. I mean, it won't, there's no expense if people are willing to put in their time and discuss. I don't see any reason to not continue the committee.
I don't agree, but Faye, do you want to offer a comment?
Sure, Faye. I'm from 32 Highland Street. So yes, I did survey the neighborhood. I'm just speaking on behalf of my, like, little mailing list, and there, what Kristin is saying is pretty much what the feedback I've been getting. This seems like a great option, but there's a lot of concerns, which I have outlined on these pieces of paper for you to look at. There's no need to, like, answer these questions and comments, but I just collected it from the community. I do feel like that this feels like a good idea for the property, but obviously, we need more information, and most people are still interested in being on a committee or having a committee look at options for their property, especially because of things like it'll be non-taxable, and if it's a sale, then in a couple of years, it could be turned over to developers, all the things that, you know, people are concerned about. So I don't know that January 1st is something that's possible at this point, but I do plus-one everything that Kristin just said, as do the people that I'm representing from my neighborhood.
Okay. I mean, I can say that I kind of, I don't agree that this is rushed, and certainly, I mean, my intent would be to view this as kind of an issue list and to try to work through it as much as possible, and that if you wanted to bring something to town meeting for, you know, like this, for thorough consideration in March, and later, we're going to be discussing whether that's March 30th or March 23rd. The time to begin is now, so that, you know, you have concerns about, you know, what the parameters of some, a deal would look like, that now is the time to get it out. I don't agree that, I think the committee approach, there's a little bit of an element to it which is kind of disingenuous, because the deliverable for a committee would be a recommendation to the Select Board about what path we want to follow. And if we have an idea of what path we want to follow, at least for the next four or five months, doesn't it make sense not to waste other people's time where we know how we want to focus our efforts at least through March? And then if, if, if there was a, town meeting didn't approve it, then, then I think the committee approach is more attractive.
I think it goes to an issue of neighborhood control over what the neighborhood's like. And if people are willing to spend their time giving input and asking questions, I don't see that, I feel I'm in any position to tell them they shouldn't do it.
No, and I don't, by... No, and I don't, by, this is just my view, and it's really for the board for discussion, but I think that the idea of putting the future use committee charge that we put together kind of on hold for the time being is not intended in any way to say we're not interested in neighborhood feedback. We should continue to do that. I just don't think that we need the strictures of a committee. And then this is one of these, you know, another like committees where there's some, it's the product of kind of a kind of awkward compromise following three, three or so meetings where we have X number of people from this committee and X number of people that live with X mileage of the the property. I think that there's nothing wrong with the select board kind of leading the discussion. And then if it comes to a town meeting vote, it goes one way or the other way. Totally respect that. Yes, Al?
I think, I think it's an important point here, which is, as you know, nothing in town government happens fast.
Yep.
And the few times we have tried to do something fast, we have regretted it. And so in rethinking this, again, I'm just, I'm listening, we need to make sure, as we go forward with the St. Matthews proposal, that this is not rushed. I think that this is a sufficiently substantial issue that if appropriate, it would be perfectly appropriate to hold a special town meeting with 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 where this is one of the centerpieces in the fall. So I don't think, I think, in fact, if we are perceived to be trying to rush this through, it will diminish the chances of it succeeding, because, well, you know, we're going to talk about something we rushed through that in a couple more items. And you know, I don't want to repeat the experience of of the park, you know, which was a rush job. So I think I'm rethinking this, that, you know, maybe this is one option. But this is the time to find out if there are other other potential uses of this building sitting there in the wings. Now, it means that the committee's going to have to hustle, because there is at least a viable option that appears to be on the table. But I think, I think the board should avoid the perception that we are rushing to get a deal done, because I don't think that will help get a deal done.
Kathy?
So I, this is extremely thoughtful. And the kind of thing that we do need to to hear, so this is all good, so I'm glad he gave this to us. So all good stuff on here. Let me just correct one thing, though. So Kristin said the same thing. The tax piece, it's already owed by the town. We don't get any taxes on the building already. And you're right, if the church were to buy it, there, 501(c)(3), we wouldn't get taxes either. So the only way we're going to get taxes is if we sell it to a developer, which I don't think you guys want as far as it goes. So let's put that one, I think that's a little bit of a red herring. But this is all good stuff. And I agree, we should, we should just go forward and see where we land, you know? And if we're not ready for primetime in March, then we'll, we could do the special town meeting and wait till the next one. But I, you know, I agree, we should do this thoughtfully, et cetera. We've got a process we have to go through and follow as far as procurement laws, et cetera, and we will follow those. But this sounds like an opportunity that seems to check a whole lot of boxes for this neighborhood. So we, we know what your concerns are, and we've already thought about those. And so we think that they will work as far as possibly this deal. So just give us a chance to to see how this plays out. And then if we need the, you know, if it doesn't, then I think the committee should get going. But I just don't see any real benefit from the committee working side by side by this until this plays itself out.
Andrew?
Yes.
Want to comment? I think that, to me, this is a classic case of town government pace not being aligned with the external world pace, in the sense that the real estate market, in my experience, is very fluid and perishable. And so, in fact, you know, there may be a perfect deal out there for us. On the other hand, by the time we find that perfect deal and execute it, a number of other deals will have gone south on us. So I think the challenge for management here, i.e. the select board, is to figure out, given the choices that we have in front of us, what makes the most sense. And this, to me, remains a very interesting option. And I certainly don't exclude other options that might come up during the course of the next weeks or months here. But for me, at least, if we've got something that is attractive on many dimensions, maybe not perfect, but pretty good. And I think, again, Faye, thanks for this list. I think many of these things we could deal with as part of a sale agreement contingent on things like the sledding hill and other things could certainly be part of that. But ultimately, I'm not optimistic that we're going to come up with a wonderful deal that checks everybody's box and has, you know, 17 different committees standing up and saying, this is the perfect solution for this thing. So you got to make decisions based on the best knowledge that you have. And I think for now, this is a very attractive option, and I think we ought to pursue quickly. I guess I don't object to a committee opining on how we might look at this or things that we might consider as part of this. But again, I don't think there's some chance that there won't be sufficient time to go through a full analysis process and produce reports, et cetera, as we contemplated previously. So, you know, again, to me, you want to strike while the iron is hot here. I don't think there's any intent to cover things up or not be transparent. And we'll certainly work hard to be transparent. But opportunity is here, and I think we need to pursue it.
Okay.
Just my, my other, my other comment for you, Faye, is that some of these questions are are answerable. Youth and family services is moving. They don't want to be there anymore. They've already got a new site. Recreation is a candidate for going into Finn if Finn closes. The stuff about the lead and the environmental, that's part of something else. You can put stipulations on a housing contract, you will not do this, you will not do that is part of the thing. So that, I think these are good questions, and they're easily answered if it's neighborhood concerns. I don't, I, I still believe that the neighborhood has good questions to ask, and that some of these are just showing a lack of data, but they're really good questions. And I think, I don't know, I think discussing it as a committee would 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 help to, what's the word I want? Give a, I hate to use the word empowerment, but it is a good feeling to know that you can control what your neighborhood has going and actually support it, as opposed to getting a, you know, 50 unit, a brick apartment building stuck down there because the town is forced to do it because of the other thing. So I would say work together with the neighborhood, if that means the committee, or even if to not do an official committee, but to do the similar to the, what was the name of it? I keep calling it a roundtable, but it wasn't.
Public forum.
The public forum, where it was just informal.
That's what I was thinking too.
Where people met and talked. And I think, yeah.
I know Joe Palmer has been waiting patiently.
Oh, Joe Palmer.
Yeah.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. I think I expressed myself when I talked to you, Andrew, before, which is that I caution the select board on cutting off essentially discussion, which is what it will be doing by by putting this committee off. This, I'm glad the select board has gotten what it wanted, which is any proposal that looked possibly viable to get rid of this property. At least that's the way it seems. And now you're going to run with it. I think that that just says to some of the rest of us that really are interested in other options, it's game on time. And so we'll, whoever wants to, will have to put competing proposals into the warrant to get heard. And I think that's the problem that you're going to have. I personally, you're looking for a call center place. Why haven't we thought of developing our own call center there? And kill two birds with one stone. I'm pretty sure everybody down in that neighborhood wouldn't mind having a law enforcement presence to make their neighborhood feel safe next to the playground. These are the sorts of types of proposals that I think would be best brought up in that committee. And I would advise you to continue on the path. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hi. Yeah, so I think that the neighborhood does want to keep discussing it. I think it is like just making it an open forum, maybe not an official committee. I think we're all, like what Joe was saying, it does, everyone's expected to be bamboozled, which I don't think is the case. I think so, because it's like government. Nobody trusts anybody. It's not personal. It's not personal, but I think.
I actually do take it personally, but.
Okay, I apologize.
Sorry, I'm a little sensitive.
It does, this, my group met with Father Flynn, and so we're like part of that discussion. We let him know that, you know, we're happy to support him if this is what ends up being best for the neighborhood. So I feel like that option is already part of sort of our neighborhood committee. So it's not like the committee is against this proposal. We just view it as one of the options that that, and I'm speaking again on behalf of the people that I've been talking to.
So just to that point, I think when we talk about, there's definitely a serious discussion that has to happen about going through all these issues that you raised, but about, I always hear about other options. I don't think the idea of using the South Union Schoolhouse for a regional dispatch center, based on my familiarity with the regional dispatch debate over the year, is something that's remotely feasible.
Not likely to happen, yeah.
You need to have antennas and everything. And one of the things where we began this discussion of anything involving public construction is magnitude's more expensive than if a private entity rehabs the building. And.
And you probably don't want the electronics in your neighborhood either.
If you, if.
I mean, that was just one random idea. I think it's like, it's, it's okay to like throw ideas out, but it makes me anxious, because it feels like we're just throwing out ideas and.
But but the key data point to me is how, two years ago, where there was a bid process for this same property, there was only one response. And I can show you what the map of the proposal looked like. It looked, it involved building multiple homes on where the sledding hill is right now to generate the money to preserve the South Union Schoolhouse as a historic building. So I mean, the main takeaways I've had are that the people want to preserve the South Union Schoolhouse as a historic building. People do not want to have, see the rest of the site developed in order to do that. And, you know, we talked about the use of the building as affordable housing, but it seems like there's some interest in still having that building have some public use, even if it's by a private entity, I think of a school or something like that. So I just, this elusive other option.
Because we haven't had a chance to discuss it, though, Andrew.
Yeah.
Like, to be honest, I really, we've had some really great conversations. I trust you, and I think you're a great person. The way you're coming across right now is, it's kind of like we're being difficult for not just wanting to jump on this one idea that sort of came out of nowhere. That's where the neighborhood is coming from. I totally, like, what you're saying makes perfect sense, but that's kind of how it's coming across to me, and I think to the, to the people that are listening in. Or maybe not, maybe it's just me and Joe.
Okay.
Yeah. Because there isn't, we have another chance to discuss it. We don't know, like, I'm not a builder. I'm just somebody from the neighborhood that's trying to keep our conversations going.
All right, I will give that some thought.
So I, I take bridge with the word bamboozle too, but we'll get beyond it. I think that we listened very closely to what the group came the first night we talked about this, which is why we're not talking about affordable housing anymore. We thought that's where we were going, that, you know, we would use the excess land to to provide construction costs for that. So we, we.
You have to mute Joe. Mute him.
Joe?
Sorry, am I wrong?
Yeah, you're muted now, hopefully. So it's, you know, we heard, that's why when, Father Flynn has been thinking about this for years, just so you know. He really has a dream of a Montessori school. He's really wanted to do this for a long time. You know, it's in the tradition of of what he believes in. And then, you know, for him, when this came forward, it seemed to truly be in the realm of things that the neighborhood would probably, it won't be everybody, you're never going to get everybody, right? There's always going to be people that are going to have different ideas. But if you look at the big things that were important to you, it checked those boxes. And a lot of the stuff is checking those boxes too. So I still think we need a chance to to play this out and see where it goes. We don't intend to rush it. We intend to do it right. It may not be ready for primetime, you know, March 23rd. And as Al said, we can always have a special town meeting, if that's what we need to do, just to focus on this. That's what special town meetings are for, is big issues. Hopefully, a lot of people come. So I just, we should have a little bit more faith in us, as far as where we're going with this. I think we know what we're doing here. And we certainly do want the neighborhood to embrace where this goes. So I think that if you give us a chance, that that things will turn out the way you you may want them to.
That sounds awesome. And we want to work with you. And with all due respect, like, the fact that I think we established all those months ago that we were going to have a committee, and then there's been so much pushback, even though it's gone forward, and then today it's been pushed off, is like just data that I'm taking in and being like, okay, do we need a different strategy for talking to the board about what to do? And I honestly, I don't know what I'm doing. Like, I really am just doing the best, and I apologize for the bamboozled comment. I don't feel that you all are bamboozlers. I think that government's really complicated. And I've gone to town meetings, and people get very upset and confused because they don't know what the facts are. So that was the experience I was speaking to, not this group of people.
Should we consider a forum on this?
That's, that's what I, and that's something I raised a couple of meetings ago, is you can get some of the, you can get some of the, the benefit of feedback from the neighborhood.
And others.
And others, without having to go through, it's going to, it would take two months to appoint. Based on our meeting schedule, my prediction would take at least two months to appoint a nine-member committee. And remember, when we had our goal-setting meeting, one of our goals was to reduce the number of committees we have, because committees are often a way of having a hard time of making a decision, so putting together a committee which puts together a report. I get the comment about be careful about going at the correct pace. I get that. I just wanted to begin the discussion on this and make this now, this expression of it as public, given that I think that where you see a scenario where there's a potential win-win-win, I think it's the select board's job to act and lead on it.
Could I just add to that? There are certain questions here that it seems to me somebody from the select board could answer. For instance, the lead thing, not relevant. The tax roll, it's, it's not, it's not on the tax rules. It will only pay taxes to the town if somebody plonks an apartment building on there, which I think we're all trying to avoid. The other question I have is, is Father Flynn going to think, well, there's too much pushback, I walk away? That also occurs to me. Is he going to?
We're certainly not giving him any, I'm sorry, I apologize, just talking.
No, no, no. I mean, we're discussing. But it seems to me that would the entire property be sold, depends on what works, right? There's some open space that has to stay. We want the sledding hill, blah, blah, blah. You want to save the front of the building, so it looks good. The other part of it is the building becomes more decrepit and more expensive to maintain. The two people who are residents now, did you live here when it was an art center?
I moved during the pandemic.
Oh, no. So it was, it was an art center for a while. That didn't fly. It was, it had facilities offices, and that didn't fly. It's basically, we've tried like 75 different, well, not 75, but we're getting, like, different things with that building, and it just doesn't fit. So the option is, if it could turn into a Montessori school for 25 kids, this might be a good way to do it. Do we want to, you know, drag out the discussion until we're all 100 years old? No, we don't really. So there is, it is timely. It would be nice to move timely. But I, and a lot of these questions, I think someone who has had experience with a conversation could probably answer it to a group of people really fast. And that would solve a lot of problems, because otherwise people are saying, well, what about this or that? Or what if they do this? And it's, and it's working with, with incomplete information.
Yeah, agreed.
So what I suggest is we, again, we've heard all the feedback, take it very seriously. So what I suggest is, let's keep having this as a regular item on the agenda, and that it makes sense to have, once some further details, we know whether or not this is something that would work or not, we would have a public forum where, you know, you can inform your list about that. where, you know, you can inform your list about that and come. It's a Saturday morning for a couple hours. We've done this before, you know, similar to what the planning board is doing with the MBTA Communities Workshop. And any interested person, come and ask a question. We answer it as best we can.
Right, bring your questions.
And before that, we could actually put an FAQ out, just to hear answers to common questions.
But basically, at this point, all we're, all we have is just letting people know that there's a serious expression of interest. This is what the parameters are and there's a lot of important details that need to be worked through, including the items on this list.
And Kathy's task is to drive as fast as possible to get answers to some of those kind of things.
Yes, and I think, I know she will do an excellent job. I'm also conscious of that she's also has a lot on her plate and does a lot of our most important work like this.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I don't take exception to the word bamboozled, because I think in fact this, the, this board has historically had a, in the last few years, had a somewhat fraught relationship with town meeting. And we need, where we to go forward with this? It needs to be socialized, it needs to be communicated, and it needs to be as transparent as possible. And so, you know, I mean, I've got lots of questions that are, you know, I don't, I don't even know what we're selling yet. So, so again, I'm not, I, I, I think haste is not going to help us alleviate suspicion.
And delay will probably kill the opportunity, so.
Right, that's, so we are, we are in a funny position. For instance, questions about like the ongoing maintenance with the other comments. Anything that's been put into the building.
It's not the ongoing maintenance, Marguerite, it's the future capital cost. So I don't know if you heard the part of the meeting where we went over our tax rate this year. So one common thing that I think everybody's concerned about in this town, unless you're just an unusual person, is a tax bill. We have a really big school project facing us that we've got to make a decision on. And no matter what, it's going to be expensive. The question is how expensive? And it's one that really could affect tax bills significantly. So we're trying to find ways to offset that. And facing a big capital cost with this building on top of that is really daunting. So that's what, that's what our concern is, is what the future would, would hold as far as what this building needs to, to maintain it. And that's our job. Our job is to, to look at things like that. So I, I, I don't know what else we can say tonight, other than I don't think we should get the committee going yet. I think we should play this out and see where it goes. I think the public forum is a great idea. And I think you're right, you just keep updating everybody at every meeting. We've explained to Father Flynn how public, this is not a normal private transaction, it's very public. You've got rules you've got to follow. We're going to have to bid this if they were to make a, a real offer on this. So there is very little that's done, not in public as far as this kind of thing goes. So.
Okay.
Are there hands in the audience?
Mr. Perry?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I'd like to make a comment here, please, as an outsider who doesn't live down there. You know, I frankly, I totally agree with the person who, I don't know them, I don't know them at all, but the word bamboozled is perfectly appropriate. Having watched your, you're dealing with this 21 Highlands several months ago, your struggle with what to do, and then your happiness that people came forward. And now you suddenly have something new coming on the table and you bamboozle them. You say, go away. You're frankly being rude to the neighborhood, period. I'm actually disgusted at what you're doing. You're not getting citizen participation whatsoever is your negative. You should invite the neighborhood in, not shove them out. That's all I've got to say.
Okay, thank you. Kristin, you have one last comment?
I do, and I'll summarize them first. And my, my problem is with the public forum is that we're, we're like you educated professionals. When I'm asked to make a decision, I want options. We don't know the options. You can have a public forum, guess what people are going to ask? What are the options? We don't know the other options, feasible options, not blue sky, crazy options. And that's why we want the committee. The second reason, we keep hearing strike while the iron's hot. Is Father Flynn going to just turn away? I, I really challenge, like, you've said Father Flynn for years has wanted to explore a project like this. And understanding the sensitivity of what we're around and the proximity of the school to the church, I, I'm sorry, but I highly doubt the church is going to be like, hey, it's now or never, or we're walking away. Like, I think that's a weird perception to put out there. But I don't think we need to strike like in the next few months. Again, I think 2025 town meeting would be a lot more realistic for, for this discussion. Also, it does kind of, you keep implying that you, you are hearing the, the neighborhood. You're not, you're not hearing the neighborhood, you're just not. You're hearing what you want to hear, but we're telling you over and over and over again, we want a committee, we want no options, and here we are tonight. And you're not being public about it, because no one, unless you're close to it, like me, Feiya, Joe happened to be, other people would know that St. Mass was going to be on the agenda tonight. There's no indication of that. So you're not being above board. And to that degree, I agree with Mr. Hamilton, agree with Mr. Ham, Perry, there's, there's a feeling of bamboozlement there. The last thing I want to just reiterate is like, having a public forum is not the same as having a committee. I would happily, like, and I'm bet, I'm the last person you want involved in that committee, but like, but the thing about the committee is that you have public facilities to get together in. You have the ability to be recorded. You have access to an accountant, to legal, to answer questions. So to imply that a public forum that people willingly show up to on a Saturday morning is the same as a committee to get us real options, tangible options, then, then as taxpayers, we can say, okay, here's option one, pros, cons. Here's option two, pros, cons. That's what we all owe them, right? That's what we're owed as taxpayers. Don't just force a decision down our throat, because, I'm sorry, the six of you or whomever think it's, seven is the best. I'll get my board straight. Five are the decision makers, the best decision makers, because again, and I know it's not most of your faults, as Mr. Hamilton said, there's a track history.
All right, thank you. And I think we've reached the point where this is about the, we've exhausted all we can say on this topic for tonight. Okay.
I just think, Andrew.
I think we, we really have come to the point where we're not prepared to make any decisions. I've, I've heard the, I've heard, I've heard the comments and I'm going to give them a lot of thought. And I know that everyone else is too.
I would like to hear more questions from the neighborhood, because I think some of them are good questions. And I think some of them show that, that more information needs to go to the neighborhood about, about, about what happens with a building that's a white elephant.
Okay, can you, can you just, let's keep this to just like one other minute or so to, because we want to move on to the next part of the agenda.
I'm happy to take any questions to the neighborhood, be the conduit for information. Please, I can do that, I'd love to do that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, this is a pivot to a completely different topic. I don't know if everyone had a chance to look at the, take another look at the goal spreadsheet that we filled out based on our initial meeting in July. So since we've reached November, we've reached kind of the midway, midway point of this year. I thought it'd be useful to check in. By the way, I know that some of the town administrator goals, you've made really good progress on a lot of them so far.
We're getting there.
Yes, and I, that's excellent. So on the newsletter goal, you know, a lot of good progress made on that. The standardization of job descriptions, monitoring the 40Bs, the South Union, although not even close to resolving that, but at least we've had a lot of public, public discussion about that. The Tricentennial Committee has been fully staffed by October, as we were looking to do the, we had a meeting with Bill Condiv about the Town Center project and that's something that's underway.
The reconstruction meeting is next Tuesday.
Okay, are there, you're talking about the St. Mark Park?
Correct.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was talking about like the town common cleanup project. Marguerite, I don't know if you had a chance to meet with Bill about that yet?
We talked, we talked a bit, yes. The, the railing around the common is agreed to be something that needs attention.
All right.
Right away.
So, you know, I have a couple bullets of things where we could, we haven't, where we could kind of advance them onto the agenda and talk about them a little further, more detail. But I'd like to hear from other people first about what you think we should do.
Technical correction.
Yes.
The Public Works Planning Board thing was, it has Al's name on it, but I'm working on that now.
Okay.
So just a technical correction there.
So we've got the spreadsheet, what have you got in front of you?
Uh, these are just my own personal notes.
Yeah, I got the spreadsheet. And Andrew, my question is, what is?
I wasn't thinking of going through each of these boxes now.
But just structurally, what's the next step with this? I mean, one of the things that I was thinking about as we did this last July was a periodic update to say, where are we with these things that would be, you know, published on the website or whatever, let the public know, where we think we're making progress and what we think some of the next steps are. And I will be slightly embarrassed by that, because I've got a couple of things that I've not made a lot of progress on. But I think that's useful to keep people informed about how we're doing with some of these things. And we've accomplished some of them, which is good too.
So Sam, I think that could be part of what you and I are going to work on, which is, you know, a better way to keep track of things using, you know, the agile thing, you know, the agile technique that you, you see a lot of companies use. So I think that should be, so that we know at all times, in real time, where things stand and not just wait for the update. But there is two I wanted to at least update people on that, I think are, there, there, these are pretty big ones. First of all is the IT one that Sam and I are assigned. I expect that in December, we will have a much, at least a part of one of our December meetings will be dedicated to this. MTC will be involved, Jay Montiel will be involved. But, you know, remember, our goal is to get to the cloud this year, right? That's one of the specific goals with that. And there's other things too. So I'm expecting to, to have a pretty robust presentation and recommendation December on that one, which I think is important, because, you know, every day we read about something else going wrong cybersecurity-wise. And there may be a proposal to, to, that would affect the budget quite a bit. So we've got to get that done quickly, because it would go in the budget for fiscal year '25. That's number one. Number two, one of the ones assigned to me, which is kind of easy, because it was going to happen. We have asked the Mass DOR to come in and do a management review of our management structure here, management practices, and a financial review of financial policies, et cetera. That's expected to start any day. For those, if you're in my world and you deal with audits all the time, et cetera, you know that auditors are not the most likely people to be wanted, right? And you, you have to do audits, there are reasons you do audits, there's good reason to do it, but, you know, you kind of dread it because of all the work. So the financial statement audit is almost over with. So they've got that behind them, so now this will start. So we think this will happen literally almost any day. So hopefully by the end of the year, first of year, we'll have that out of the way and we'll have some good recommendations we can consider as far as both of those two categories. So that's the two that I wanted to mention that have my initials on them.
Al?
I've been giving regular updates on the regional dispatch, which has sort of been the, the big item. We have also been making some quiet progress behind the scenes on some of the affordable housing goals that is more appropriately discussed in a different forum.
Mm-hmm. Good. Sam?
And to follow on Al's comment, we actually, as we talked earlier, Al reported earlier, have been gathering a lot of information about the regional dispatch process, and Al and I are on that one. And one of mine that was listed sort of below the rest of them was consider additional services for the senior population that's growing. And had a very interesting meeting recently. As you folks know, I'm a recent appointee to the Metro West Regional Transit Authority Advisory Board. And had their director over here to the senior center to talk with Pam and her crew about opportunities for that. And I think we found some things that they actually offer that we've not been taking advantage of that will expand the range of transportation services for senior, senior citizens and vision impaired and other disability folks. So I think we're working on some efforts to communicate some of those. And I think they're working on a presentation for sometime early next year to communicate that. And I think that's again, a great opportunity for something that we pay for, we have access to, but we didn't realize that there were some features there that, that we could use more. So those kind of things, I think, will be helpful to people and we'll continue to look for other things like that.
Okay. Marguerite?
Oh, well, one, one part, sorry.
One part, one part of my mandate is the policies manual and the handbooks for departments and employees. And I'm sort of happy to report that the job descriptions are now four pages long. They're getting standardized. But part of the job description is now a section on what that person can be expected to do in any given week, which is, puts three dimensions onto it and it's very specific. Melanie has been fantastic with this. So I think those are a really good start. As far as doing a manual and policies, haven't looked at that yet, but I am going to the personnel board meeting tomorrow morning. The other thing is that Barry has got the handbook just about written and drafted. And I think the library job descriptions are coming up next, which is 11 people. And I think those are in the pipeline, so that should be good. And that's sort of where I am.
All right. I guess I would just encourage everyone, if there's a couple items that you've been assigned to and you want to bring it further for a, you know, further discussion by the board, please don't hesitate to let me know. Yes?
The CPC money, again, raising it to 3%. Kathy and I were going to talk about that. I think Jim's question about whether it should be spent on town projects, on, on materials that were owned by the town or not, is, is part of that discussion.
Okay.
I don't think you can ask for more if it's not clear where it's going.
Let's, would it be okay if everyone, if the last item on the agenda, the discussion of the town meeting date? We do that?
That would be considered.
Yeah, since Mr. Hagerty and Mr. Semino are here. I had not remembered that we, we had voted to make March 30 the town meeting date.
Acceptable schedule, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, March 30 is the Saturday before Easter. So obviously, I mean, my view, that's not a great date to have a town meeting. So the natural candidate to replace it would be the preceding Saturday, which is March 23rd. How does that sound to everyone?
The clerk and moderator are okay.
Well, remember, the rule is we've got to do it on a Saturday. The time is set and no later than the last Saturday of March. So it's acceptable. You know, it's, it's already truncated. We know how hard it was last year to be ready for it, so now we're just going to lose another week. But I don't think we have a choice. We can't do this. They stayed at 1:00 the night, and either be there on Easter morning would probably not make a lot of people happy and it wouldn't make us happy.
So I mean, another thing we could do is potentially start earlier and then finish earlier.
Do we have the flexibility with the bylaw?
I, I see. Jim, do you want to come speak to that?
Yeah.
Because he, okay, he's nodding his head yes.
And do we know that Trotter is available on the 23rd? It's not? Oh, we don't know.
All right. So does it make sense, we will wait to hear confirmation? Pardon me? Okay, all right. I move that the board set a March 23rd date for the 2024 annual town meeting.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed?
To start at 1:00?
Yes.
Come up to the mic.
Come on up.
I'm for the earlier start and I think you ought to put that stake in the ground now as well.
The time, the time.
Yeah.
Yes.
I, I, 10, 10 o'clock AM instead of noon? Okay.
It was 1:00, so 10, three hours, that'll help.
All right. I think that makes a lot of sense.
Yep.
Okay. Any further? Any further comment about that? I move that our March 23rd, 2024 annual town meeting start at 10:00 AM.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? All right. So, um, the next and last item on the agenda, uh, is Mr. Hamilton's suggestion that the board commission a, uh, independent audit of the St. Mark's Street project and, um, I have put this on the agenda, I will just leave, begin the discussion and we'll go down. I'm not in favor of this. I think that there's a good contrast between this agenda item and the FY '24 goals we set. It's, it's, to me, it's pretty clear that, like, relitigating something that was already a contentious item over the last two years was not one of the goals where we decided we're going to spend a lot of time focusing on this. This is my third year on the board, so I'm very familiar with, uh, the contentious discussion that we went through the last two years. And basically, it's a concluded matter. Uh, there was a town meeting vote at, um, the last town meeting to, um, approve the land swap and complete the park. And for those that have been following our meetings, including the meeting with Bill Kundoff, the last one, we're very focused on keeping the cost of that remaining part of the project, um, within the $250,000, uh, limit that town meeting set. I think, what I think of an audit as, and Kathy, feel free to correct me, as looking to see whether money was spent for its intended purpose. I think that this discussion is really about whether or not it was a good decision or not two or three years ago to, um, undertake this project. And I just don't see it's a useful exercise to debate it back and forth and back and forth. Another thing that I have found is that people have very strong feelings about this matter. Often, even if they don't have complete information, and I think that people's minds are, I feel people's minds are, are made up about this. Uh, it just kind of is what it is. It wasn't a, there are certainly lessons learned that I have thought and reflected on for a long time, but I don't think I need to, uh, spend money on an audit report to, um, realize what those lessons are. For example, about the sequencing of, um, the land swap, uh, and how that related to the, um, the deadlines attached to the grant for the, um, state piece of the project. Um, so that's what I have to say about it. Kathy?
I am disappointed where you've been talking about this again. Um, the select board last year, um, went to great length and great time, starting with the May 31st meeting, um, to address all concerns that have been raised by various groups, and they weren't the same concerns. They, they came from, um, various factions and, um, we, I think we did a yeoman's work, and we dealt with every single one of them. We then went to town meeting and spent a large amount of time in front of the town, went through the whole project from A to Z, including the cost, um, of the project. Um, the town voted overwhelmingly to approve those two articles. We then came back and we began executing and have, again, strived to do everything we possibly could to bring this, um, ugly pile of dirt, um, to something that's not an ugly pile of dirt. So I'm just going to take a minute and go back real quick. Um, number one, Mr. Hamilton never came to me and said, can you show me the work you did on advisory to determine the cost? I did a ton of work. Um, I met with Karen Galligan over and over to make sure I understood the cost. Um, lots of questions were answered. An audit is not going to do what you just described, Andrew, it's not going to question the wisdom of the project or whether we could have spent the money differently, which of course we could have. All it's going to do is something I've already done, which is, um, go to E.H. Perkins and ask E.H. Perkins to take that $2.6 million and break it up into its three parts. It's already been done. Um, I've heard, um, you want to allocate indirect costs. When have we ever allocated indirect costs to a project in this town? Never. Um, and you would never add those costs to the, to the project. Um, so there's no...
And to that point, for the legal, we have a flat fee.
We do.
You can agree on that.
We do, we do. So not one extra penny there spent, so what's the purpose of doing that? So I am just really disappointed that after all the work that we spent after town meeting voted to say, we've got to bring this to town meeting, we've already brought it to town meeting. Um, the, the inaccuracies, the things that have been said are just, um, disturbing. Uh, this project was done in attempt to correct a water problem, a water problem on a road that everybody saw every time it rained. It was a real water problem, also to improve the water problem in the library, which it has done. That was the fundamental reason that this was done. Um, Ms. Galligan designed a project that included the land swap, they would put a park. So we've ended up with a park, which usually people like, they're good things. Urban planners like parks. We have ended up fixing the water problem on St. Mark's Street, and we have improved the water problem on the library. And we've got a nice park that people can, will be able to go sit in. St. Marks will end up with a better parking lot, and we've got a contiguous piece of land that can be used for future expansions, library, if we chose to do it. Um, and you would think that we have just truly, um, committed a crime. And I am just sorry, I am so tired of talking about this park, I just want to get it done. Um, I had all the numbers, and if you just asked me and sat down with me, uh, Mr. Hamilton, I would have gone over this with you, but instead, you know, it's on the blog now, you know, words like malfeasance are out there. So I just take great issue with the fact that we're even asked to vote on this tonight, so I will definitely vote not to support an audit, which I don't think will accomplish one thing, but confirm what the cost is, which we already know what it is. Um, and this idea that we want to allocate indirect costs, we've never done that ever in a project in this town. So, sorry.
Sam?
Yep. Al, I know you feel strongly about the need for an audit here, and I do understand your concerns. Um, as a select board member who has been involved with this project for a longer time than any of us, I've seen the full history of the project. I'll be the first to agree that, uh, this could have been managed better, but frankly, I can say that about almost any project, if you look back at it with hindsight. Uh, there's been a lot of public concern and a lot of misinformed noise about the project. However, I believe there's been no illegal activity or malfeasance. Um, in fact, um, we've had MassDOT look at the project, we've had Office of Inspector General look at the project, and the consistent result has been no problem here, just get the thing completed. So I don't believe an audit would tell us anything that we don't already know or haven't already started or, uh, completed actions to do a better job with future projec- projects. So my bottom line is, I want to spend my time focusing on the many important issues we have in front of us as opposed to looking behind us. I believe we're on the way to getting a very attractive town asset with this project, and I'm not interested in spending additional time or money looking backward. So I don't support devoting any additional effort to a, to a forensic audit or other audit of the process. And, uh, you and I are going to have to agree to disagree on this one, so I'm sorry.
I don't support doing, um, an audit on it. Uh, if needed, um, there could be a statement of sources and uses of funds that Carl McAuliffe could do. Um, I am satisfied with the project, I was the chair of the working group that, um, that expanded the charge to design the park. I, as chair of the Library Board of Trustees, I have to say, we have not had any water coming into the library from the north side since the substructure was put into that piece of land. And for that, I am eternally grateful to Karen Galligan.
Well, I did wear my flameproof suit. Um, I, I, I view this quite differently. As I think, you, you probably know, I'm not a fan of this park. I spent some time, uh, reviewing some of the initial applications, and, um, I won't say anything further on, on that subject. My big concern is this board's credibility with town meeting. And we're going to be asking town meeting for a number of controversial things in the next years. And we need to rebuild trust with town meeting because I think that reservoir was drained as a result of this project. And, you know, there's always going to be a healthy tension there, but, um, my goal was to try and rebuild trust. I am, I, I don't know what we're going to do to do that. You heard it today, um, you know, there, you know, half the committees that, that we've appointed, uh, don't like what we're doing, and the other half will probably not like it soon. So, um, I know when I'm beat, and so I'll, let's move on to something else.
Thank you, Al.
Yeah.
Um, just quickly, as you know, I, uh, support, um, Al with the whole idea of taking a look at this. I appreciate all the work that has gone into this, and I know there have been hours and hours that have gone into this. And the, the one sentence that I'll say is, as a taxpayer, I think that the amount of money that the town paid, um, yeah, can be quantified. I guess I'm looking for, how much did St. Marks pay? And, you know, maybe that information exists someplace, but as a taxpayer, um, we paid a lot of money. And I understand that we're all taxpayers, but we really did pay a lot of money.
What are you asking about St. Marks? What is it you want to know that they paid for?
Right.
But what? What do you, what is it that they paid for?
Right. All that work has been done, the park, and I don't know how much it, and St. Marks gets a lot of benefit out of all that.
It's a, it's a public park, it's a public street, and St. Marks will bear the cost of the parking lot that they have a pending site plan approval application for. It's their property. And, you know, one of the things I really wrestled with, uh, is whether really even put this on the agenda. And, um, this is the same discussion that we had a year ago, it's the exact same discussion. So with that, I move that the board approve, uh, an independent audit for the St. Marks Street project.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay. Um, is there any remaining public comment?
Yeah, we have several hands up.
Okay, uh, Mr. Lit?
Yeah, Tim Lit, Woodland Road. I just wanted to take a minute and give you a brief update and heads up on what's going on with the Public Works Planning Board evolution, uh, effort that's been going on. Um, we met with Town Council, who turns out to be very optimistic that with support of our legislators, I think with amending the special act could move a lot faster than the documented process. In fact, um, if, if, if it's as optimistic as, as he indicated, um, could be as early as, like, July 1 for, uh, getting this special act amended. I'm not sure about that, but in any case, um, this means that the town may have to, uh, staff the new tree warden position in the FY '25 budget. And so I wanted to alert you to the, uh, fact that there may be a, a more immediate budget implication than, uh, we'd been thinking previously. Um, and depending on how it's structured, that may also require some help from the Personnel Board in terms of getting something into the SAP, if that's the way that we go. Um, and finally, um, we have started putting together sort of a scratch job description for this based on what other towns do and the requirements. Um, and, uh, sometime soon, we will start talking with Bill Kundoff about, um, how he sees it because it would end up in his world. But I didn't want this to come as a last-minute surprise.
Thank you. Is there any other, uh, remaining public comment?
Yep, four hands up.
Four hands, okay. Um, I don't have them in front of me, but... Okay, um, Kristin Laval, would you like to speak?
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. Um, just a quick question. Uh, on the last agenda item, uh, put forward by Mr. Hamilton, I heard a vote being taken, but I'm not sure I heard what the final vote was, and I'm sorry if I missed it.
The vote was 4-1, no.
Okay. So I just want to comment on that. Um, I agree with Mr. Hamilton. I mean, we, we sit here a year later, as you said, and I don't think the sentiment has changed, and there is a general lack of distrust, of trust, which I know is not the fault of many on, who are here, or perhaps not at all. So I, you know, you're saying you're listening to the voters. If you are, then I'm confused why we wouldn't move this forward. I understand you're satisfied if the voters are saying they're not. Now, that being said, I don't know, if we go into my Southborough tomorrow, or however, perhaps people are. I don't mean to represent everyone, but I think there's clearly lingering questions, and I think Mr. Hamilton's trying to take care of those, because until we do, we can't move forward. Like, you guys saying you're satisfied's one thing, but if the public's not, that's another, and so I think, you know, we just got to ground that. Um, and, uh, lucky for you, I lost my last question, so I'll stop talking. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Miller?
Uh, hi, Select Board. Um, Kevin Miller, 18 Lattisquama Road. And this is just a procedural, um, question, and I apologize if you're already aware of this issue and, and somebody's dealing with it. Um, but other than the video that was shown during public comment at the opening of the meeting, the assessor's presentation, and a couple of brief glimpses of Ms. Hale, um, this has been three hours and five minutes of a black screen, um, tonight. And it was the same thing last night with the planning board, 140, um, hour and 47 minutes of, um, black screen on one side and, um, Ms. Stansfield, who was remote, on the other. And so I don't know what's going on with the, um, recordings, but it's problematic because when you have a black screen and you're taking, um, votes by show of hands, I know there's going to be a menace, of course, but it's, it's...
Kevin here, um, Terry from SAM is, is, they, they have been working to try to get this fixed, but I can't tell you what the issue is, but...
Oh, okay.
You've heard, this is a problem, and...
Okay, thanks.
She says you can walk, she says you can watch it live now.
Maybe, Andrew, at the end of a vote, you could say, we have four, four and one against, or whatever.
Yeah.
Well, I, I just to point out that...
Henceforward if it still doesn't work.
All right.
I, I, I've checked this both on, the Zoom webinar is a black screen, and the Zoom, the YouTube feed is a black screen. So it just makes the meeting into a pot...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Um, as Terry said, if you go to the SAM website, you can view it. Okay, and I'm...
I, I see. Okay, thank you, thank you, Andrew. Sorry to, to take your time up with that, but I just think it's...
No, that's okay.
And recorded...
Would you be able to watch it, then, to do the minutes?
And recorded version will be available tomorrow as well.
Right. It, yeah, it's just that, you know, it, it's kind of a, a irony when there's a lot of conversation about sort of transparency issues when you have a black screen for three hours. Anyway, uh, have a good night and, and thanks for all your efforts.
Okay, and, yes? Okay, Kevin, so just to repeat, uh, what Terry said, the whole thing has been going live on Southborough Access Media.org.
And the government channel.
And the government channel, so there is a, uh, recording of the meeting.
And it's going to YouTube.
And it will go, and it will go to YouTube. Okay, and then, last but not least, Mr. Perry? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Patty?
Yes. Hi. Um, I, I just, in regards to what Kevin was just saying, that actually the recorded version of last night's planning board meeting also has a blank screen. So even though it's being recorded, what is then available for replay is no better than what people see. But I actually wanted to make a comment regarding your last vote. Um, I just, I understand that you've taken the vote on this, I, however feeling, it... I feel necessary to comment on this. Um, I think either Andrew or Sam, you said that there were lessons learned. I'm not sure that we've ever actually discussed what those learned lessons are. I, I'd like to know that, because I also looked into this project for many months and many, many hours. I still have questions. I did obviously come to the conclusion that solving the problem and moving forward was more important and more cost-effective to the town than stopping things. But I would like to know what the lessons are and who learned them. I think part of the argument that I had from the get-go with this project was a lack... I think part of the argument that I had from the get-go with this project was a lack of transparency, and I know that maybe a couple of people now are calling that accountability or fiscal responsibility. I see it as a lack of transparency. And by shutting down a request to look into this and come up with a synopsis of what happened and why we aren't going to do it again, by shutting that down at the get-go, I think you're only adding to this lack of transparency or distrust, I think it's transparency, that the Select Board is becoming common known for. I, so I disagree with your vote. I'm not sure that we need to spend one more additional penny on this project by hiring a consultant to do a forensic accounting. Perhaps it could be done by volunteers. I know that there have been a number of people, including myself, that have put together a lot of information regarding this project. But to shut it down without a public record or a public discussion of what happened, why it happened, why it was allowed to happen, and what we have learned from this, in order to make sure that it just never happens that way again, I think is disingenuous to the citizens of this town. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And there's one last comment, right? Mr. Perry?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. I'd just like to also comment on the last agenda item. I support the last statement by the previous person who just spoke, the lack of accountability here. Mr. Hamilton's a brave man. He said what he's saying, because he's a new member of the board and was not complicit in it. The outcome, the 4-1 vote was absolutely predictable. And the reason is it, because you're all complicit in a project which is a mess, and you've all had a part in it, and you all had some parts in it, and now you're unwilling to have anyone look into that, obviously, because it's not in your personal interests. I think the project is a disaster. There's going to be no official record of what happened, and you, frankly, four of you, owe the town an apology. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perry.
I don't see any further comments, so I move that we adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor? All those opposed?
Unanimous. Thanks. 5-0.